Well, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for Thursday, February the 24th. It's cold out there, so best to be in here, I suppose. Before we get started, if you could, please make sure your cellphones are turned to silent or turned off. Either way is fine. We just don't want to hear them while we're trying to conduct the meeting. If you want to be heard on an item today, these little sheets of paper are out front. You're welcome to fill one out. You can hand that to staff, and at the appropriate time, we'll call on you. Speakers have five minutes to make comments. We limit conference to five minutes. In addition to that, as always, if comments are repetitive or spurfilous, or we're getting away from the items that we're here to talk about, I'll interrupt you and we'll restrict your comments. But we certainly want to hear what anybody has to say, as long as it pertains to an item before us, and we haven't heard it before. So, again, we appreciate everybody here on a cold day. It's not a great day to travel, so. With that, we'll get started. Our first order of business is to receive the minutes from the February 10th, 2022 meeting. If there's no discussion from commissioners, I'll take a motion on those minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we receive the minutes from the previous meeting.
Okay. I have a motion, and I'll take the second on Prime Gov. It's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. And those minutes are received. Next order of business today, our uncontested continuance requests. We have a few of those. Mr. Butler, you want to read those for us?
Yes, item 23 is SPOUD 1377, request to defer to March 10th. Item 24, special permit 557, defer to March 24th. Sorry, I want to make sure that first one, item 23, defer to March 10th. Not sure if I got that right. Item 24, defer to March 24th. Item 25, case SPOUD 1386, defer to March 24th. Item 26, case PC 10753, has been withdrawn. And item 27, case PC 10792, has also been withdrawn.
Is there anybody who wanted to be heard on one of those items today? Okay. If there's no further discussion from commissioners, I will take a motion on those uncontested continuance requests as read.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the continuous, continuance requests as read.
Okay. I have a motion. It's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and those continuances are approved. We do have some new continuance requests, from what I understand, and I think at least another handful. Mr. Butler, you want to read those?
Yes, item 10, case C 7401, defer to March 10th. Item 14, case PUD 1871, defer to March 24th. Item 15, case PUD 1878, withdrawn. Item 16, case PUD 1880, defer to March 10th. Item 19, case PUD 1882, defer to March 24th. And finally, item 20, SPOUD 1380, has been withdrawn.
Okay. And item 19 is not shown on the screen there, so just to be sure, that was PUD 1882 was also read into the record for continuance. Is there anybody here that wanted to be heard on any of those items today? Okay. Seeing none, if there's no discussion on any of those items from commissioners, I would take a motion on those items as read.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the continuance requests as read.
Okay. I have a motion to continue. I have a motion to continue the items as read. It's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and those continuances are approved as well. Any additional new items for request continuance? Okay. Seeing none, then our next item of business for the day is our consent docket. Mr. Butler, we have a number of items on consent today. You want to read those for us?
Yes, item 1 is case CE 1068, application to close 118 feet of the east-west alley of Block 2 in the Westover Edition located south of southwest 5th Street and west of South Ollie Avenue, as well as 170 feet of southwest 6th Street located west of South Ollie Avenue. Item 2, case CE 1069, application to close 700 feet of a 20-foot wide north-south access easement extending south from southwest 89th Street west of South County Line Road. Item 3 is case CE 1070, application to close a 5-foot wide utility easement located between lots 4 and 5 of Block 40 in the Rivendell Section 13 Edition located north of southwest 131st Terrace and east of South Leslie Way. Item 4 is case SN 093, a resolution changing the name of Burgoyne East Drive, Burgoyne West Drive, and Burgoyne Drive to Burgundy East Drive, Burgundy West Drive, and Burgundy Drive located in the Vintages at Camden Park, Section 2, located south of northwest 164th Street and east of North Pennsylvania Avenue. Item 5, case ED 233, application on behalf of, well, I skipped that, application to dedicate a portion of North Walker Avenue and northwest 12th Street to the public. And that's, and finally, item 6, case C 7374-13, final plat of Hidden Creek at Surrey Hills, Phase 1, located east of North Piedmont Road and south of northwest 122nd Street.
Okay. Is there anybody who wanted to be heard on one of those items today? Yes, sir.
David Box, 522, Call Cord Drive. On item 2, we would ask that the TE included be deleted. Perhaps you want to just remove it and take it in order instead of...
Let's just pull it.
Okay.
We'll just pull it to separate items. It'll be the first item we hear, so we're removing item 2 from the consent docket. Is there anybody that wants to be heard on the other items on the consent agenda today, which are items 1, 3, 4, 5, and 6? Okay. If there's no further discussion from commissioners on any of those items, I'll take a motion, again, removing item 2.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent docket as amended.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the items on the consent docket today excluding item 2, which is CE 1069. It's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and those items are approved. Next item on our agenda begins items requiring separate vote, and because of the removal of item 2, we'll begin with that one. Mr. Box?
Yes. Once again, David Box, 522, Call Cord Drive. This is a closing application, and if you look at the exhibit before you, it's a very narrow portion that we seek to close. Construction plans have already been approved by the city. There are no utilities. There are no infrastructure pieces whatsoever in this area to be closed, and so we would ask that the TE be deleted. I did reach out to Mr. Lodge. I got a bounce-back email that he is gone until, I believe, sometime next week. I wasn't sure who else in Public Works to visit with. But construction plans are already approved. There is no infrastructure there, and there won't be any, so there is no need to retain a perpetual easement.
Is there anybody here from city staff who can comment on the need for what has become a standard note?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if there's not, and there's no objection from city staff, I'm going to recommend that we delete it, so. Any commissioners feel differently than that? It's clearly not that important. Okay. Well, I'll take a motion. If somebody wants to make it, I guess, out of an abundance of caution, I'll ask, is there anybody else who wants to be heard on item 2, CE 1069? Okay. Seeing none, if there's no further discussion, in Commissioner Coffey's absence, I'd take a motion on the item deleting TE 1.
I'll make a motion to approve item CE 1069, deleting TE 1.
Okay. I have a motion. Motion to recommend approval on CE 1069, deleting TE 1. Paula, are you...
Do you have a motion there? I don't see...
Yes. It's not up on my screen.
Yeah, it's not showing on mine either. There we go. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Sorry for the buffering. Motion, a second, to recommend approval of CE 1069, deleting TE 1. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is recommended for approval. Next item on our agenda, we'll jump to item number 7, which was supposed to be our first item requiring separate vote. Applicant present?
Yes, sir. Mark Zitzau with Johnson &amp; Associates, 1 East Sheridan Avenue. This is a PUD to permit a car wash, other commercial uses, and then we've also sought to seek approval for the single-family and duplex use that would likely occur on the north side of the track adjacent to the church if this does not develop fully as commercial. There is a TE. We agree with it, but after a conversation with Commissioner Cravens, I would like to add a few more. So TE 1 was to limit the access points to four along Council Road. We agree to that. TE number 2 would be for use unit 8300.13, which is automotive parking lots. It should be revised to strike the word permitted and replace it with restricted. TE number 3 would be Section 9.4, should include, if a portion of this tract is developed with residential, a minimum 15-foot landscape buffer should be provided with evergreen plantings on 20-foot centers adjacent. And then TE number 4 would be Section 9.17, should include, the planning commission expressly reserves the right to review and approve landscaping, pedestrian connectivity, and screening at the time of the specific plan stage. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but we would ask for your approval.
Okay. Let me add a little color to that. I reached out to Mr. Zitzau on this item. This is a Ward 8 item, so just to bring my fellow commissioners in, my concern on this item related to the fact that the rezoning application allows for both commercial and residential to potentially coexist here, so given some of our comments in our previous discussions about it, these are suggestions that I recommended for your consideration in an effort to try to ensure that we were going to get something that was compatible if it went commercial or it went residential. So what he was talking about in the first TE, 8300.13, you'll see some limiting language in our staff report that said the use is permitted for the purpose of shared parking. I wanted to make sure it was clear that we were only allowing that for those. So I just said this use is limited to shared parking to allow for phasing and landscape construction. And then the other two comments he alluded to were just about ensuring that if there are homes and they were to be developed prior to any kind of commercial development going on, that there would be appropriate buffers and landscaping, separation, and screening. And then because this application provides for a specific plan, I wanted to make sure that we reserve the right at specific plan stage to review those. In addition to that, the connectivity piece was about the same thing. There's likely to be a car wash included in the development, but there's also, it could be that there's duplexes in, you know, retail, so preserving pedestrian connectivity is something I thought the commission may want to review later. So those were my requests. So I think that brings up to speed everything we talked about that wasn't at the meeting. Is that fair?
That's fair.
Okay. And I don't have any other comments on this, and I have not received any outreach from citizens in the ward on it, so if there's no discussion from planning commission members, I'll ask, is there anybody here to be heard on PUD 1881? Okay.
I had one comment.
Sure.
On the limiting to four entrances, I think the city's going to require it anyway, but that one of them align with northwest 11th.
111th?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That's a good question. Would that be required? I don't know. I think it's just the 200-foot separation, right?
It'd be 200 feet of separation, but in order for their 2B 4-drives, one would have to line up with 111th.
Got it. Does that appease you, or do you want to... Okay. All right. Any other discussion or comments? Okay. Well, I can't make a motion, or I would. I'd make a motion to recommend approval to City Council on PUD 1881, subject to the technical evaluations as amended by the applicant and read into the record. If somebody wants to try to regurgitate those, they can, but I think the applicant was pretty clear on what those were.
I agree. Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of PUD 1881 with the amended technical evaluations as read into the record.
Okay. I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Claire to recommend approval on PUD 1881, subject to the amended technical evaluations as read into the record by the applicant. Please cast your votes. And that item is recommended for approval. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number 8. Mr. Butler?
This is SPOUD 1384, application to rezone 4301 Southeast 118th Street from SPOUD 1851.
Welcome.
Hi.
Start out by giving us your name and address for the record, and tell us what you want us to know.
My physical address I live at?
Yes, just for the purposes of the record.
Carry vote, and physical address is 2509 Southeast 93rd Street.
Thank you, Mr. Vote. What do we need to know?
We just need to expand this work footage on the house.
Seems like a reasonable request. We'll find out. Mr. Privet, this is your ward, sir. Do you have questions for the applicant or comments on this one?
Zero. Pretty cut and dry. I don't think anybody signed up to speak, if there is.
I do not have anybody sign up to speak, but of course, I'll ask just to make sure. SPOUD 1384, does anybody want to be heard today on that one? Okay. Seeing nobody, if there's no discussion from commissioners, and you don't have any comments, Commissioner Privet, I think we can take a motion.
I'm going to approve SPOUD 1384.
Okay. I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Claire to recommend approval to City Council on SPOUD 1384. There are no TEs. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is recommended for approval. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda today is item 9.
This is SPOUD 1387, application to rezone 200 Southwest 134th Street from SPOUD 1335.
Good afternoon, Mark Zitzau with J&amp;A, 1 East Sheridan Avenue, Oklahoma City. Before you, it was an application that you have seen before. After it was approved by City Council, they sought to add the multifamily use. I'm going to grab a board real quick. This tract and the tract immediately to the east have been rezoned to almost an identical SPOUD. So our tract remains identical to what was previously approved, except that it adds in multifamily with a restriction to, I believe, 115.
115.
115 units. There's one TE that we would like to add. It's the same TE on our previous one for the use unit 8300.13. We would state that the use is restricted slash limited for the purpose of shared parking to allow for the phasing of landscaping and building construction. With that, we would ask for your approval.
Commissioner Hinkle, this is your ward, sir, and to be fair to you and to the applicant, I'll say that in our conversation about the other item, because this language also appeared, I suggested that he change it. So that was where that came, that TE came from, was our conversation. So do you have other questions or comments on this for the applicant?
I do not.
Okay. I'll ask, is there anybody who wants to be heard on SPOUD 1387? Okay. If there's no discussion from commissioners on this, or no other comments from you, Commissioner Hinkle, I think we're ready for a motion if you're agreeable to that friendly amendment to TE 1.
I move approval of SPOUD 1387 with the TE as read into the record.
Okay. I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Privet to recommend approval to City Council on SPOUD 1387, subject to the amended language for the use unit 8300.13. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is recommended for approval. Item 10 has been continued to March the 10th. That's C 7401. Next item is item 11. Mr. Butler?
This is item C, this is case number C 7414, preliminary plat of Parkway Square, located south of northwest 150th Street and east of north Portland Avenue. And there's a variance to 5.3.1. D. 5 of the subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon, Mark Zitzau, 1 East Sheridan Avenue. This is a property that had recently been rezoned. The layout is very similar to what you saw in the PUD, except there is a little bit more open space and a private detention easement that goes from south to north along the site. We agree with all of the TEs. I think there was one question as to whether or not TE number 2 was actually a variance, or if it was just a waiver. So I'm not sure that we need a variance, but I would defer to staff.
The subregs say waiver, but we've always included it as a variance in the staff report in the past, so I would just, I would go ahead with the variance.
Okay, requiring a variance.
Requiring a variance, yes.
So do we know what's, I mean, are we varying a section, or what are we varying?
There's a TE that has the section in it.
I don't see that.
It's the heading.
Oh, that's, okay. She's right, it is in the agenda, but it is not in our, it's not in the packet staff report, so my apologies. So the variance would be to Section 5.3.1. D. 5. Are you in agreement with that, Mr. Zitzau, that that's, you know that?
Yes, and correct. And part of the reason we weren't sure if a variance was needed is because there is connectivity provided south of this property to the east, and that's where the conversation with staff. But we're fine requesting the variance.
Got it. Okay. Well, we'll, so we'll just add that. This is, my apologies, this was my ward, and I didn't catch that, but I don't have any other comments on this, this item. Is there anybody who wants to be heard on C 7414? Okay. Let me just double-check something here. So just for the purposes of the record, I'll say that staff indicates that the design of this preliminary plat conforms with the subdivision regulations as they relate to access requirements for subdivisions. With between 101 and 200 lots, the developer is also conforms to the requirements of PUD 1828, which is the underlying zoning, again, as reported to us by staff. So if there's no discussions from other commissioners on this, I'd take first a motion on the variance.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the variance to Section 5.3.1. D. 5 of the subdivision regulations.
Okay. I'll take the second to that motion on Prime Gov. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes on the variance. And that variance is approved with six votes. I need a motion on the item.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve C 7414.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the preliminary plat to C 7414. It's been seconded by... That motion was made by Commissioner Pennington, seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes when available. Yes, that is subject to the technical evaluations as noted and agreed to by the applicant, and we approve the variance. All votes should be cast? And that item is approved. Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda today is item number 12.
This is case number C 7391, a preliminary plat of Post Grove. This is located west of Indian Meridian, excuse me, located south of southeast 29th Street and east of Post Road.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522, Call Cord Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, who is Joel Bryant, who's here with us, and Mark Grubbs, who is the civil engineer for this project. This is a preliminary plat of what is called Track 3 of PUD 1750. PUD 1750 was a large-scale PUD that encompassed just over 80 acres that this body would have heard in February of 2020, so exactly two years ago. In fact, I think it was the last public hearing of this body prior to going to Zoom at the outset of the pandemic. If we, if we look back to that time, and luckily, the snow date provided me the opportunity to find that hearing on YouTube and watch it, one of the things that I found interesting was, at the time of the PUD, we actually had to seek a comprehensive plan change amendment from rural medium to urban low. Again, our PUD encompassed 80 acres. Staff, on their own initiative, asked you, the planning commission, to expand the request from the 80 acres that we sought to an area that encompassed 400 acres because of the availability of public infrastructure, notably sewer and water. You, the planning commission, took their advice and so designated 400 acres as urban low. Then you recommended approval of this PUD. Ultimately, it was approved by City Council in April of 2020. If you look at the PUD, and you had an opportunity to watch that hearing, it was a lengthy hearing. There was one individual that was here, but the hearing took over an hour. The upshot of the hearing was that you, the planning commission, were very thoughtful in how you designed almost every tract, and how the TEs were going to be required to be, and how the development would ultimately occur here. The only person that was here sat here on these benches for over an hour to only come to the podium when trees were being discussed by Mr. Highsmith to say, "You have talked a lot about trees. As someone who's lived there since I was 14 years old, I will tell you, this land has nothing but scrub oak and cedar trees. If every tree got bulldozed, it would be a benefit to the area," to which Mr. Privet wholeheartedly agreed. So as we fast forward, now we are here on a plat. The plat, again, falls within Track 3 of the PUD. If you look at the PUD, which I've handed out, Track 3 has a base zoning district of R2. R2 is synonymous with duplex development. Notably, though, if you looked at the uses that are permitted by right, it allows up to four-family residential, which is synonymous with quadplex. What I asked Mr. Grubbs to do is to plot what a quadplex development, which is permitted under the PUD and compliant with the comprehensive plan, what it would look like. This is what it would look like. 520 dwelling units is what is permitted through the PUD. Now, fast forward to what we're asking for. We are asking for 190 lots. That's 122 single-family lots, 68 duplex lots, for a total of 258 total units. We are less than half of what the PUD would allow in terms of density. Now, Mr. Work, based upon the letters that I've seen, in fact, he just handed me something right as I stood up, so I, of course, haven't had the chance to read, that, however, I am anticipating he's going to take issue with the PUD. He could have done that. The statutes allow for someone to challenge an ordinance. The time to do that was May of 2020, not February of 2022. The PUD was approved, the ordinance is adopted, it is final. He points specifically to some provisions in the TEs from the council memo that I want to address briefly. 2C, he says that we failed to do. 2C says, specify methods of tree preservation in the master design statement and showing areas of tree preservation on subsequent plats and specific plans. A simple reading of the PUD would show that we do, in fact, conform to that. If you look at 9.7.4 under setback regulations, the second sentence says, however, along the northern and eastern boundaries of Track 3, 4, and 5, and the southern boundary of Track 2, setbacks shall be increased by creating green belts at least 25 foot in width and preserving healthy mature trees within said 25-foot green belt area. That 25-foot green belt area is shown on the plat, and in fact, the civil engineer has laid out the infrastructure in such a way to put the sanitary sewer on the west side of that green belt so that those trees won't have to be ripped out when the sanitary sewer gets installed, likewise, also on the north. so that those trees won't have to be ripped out when the sanitary sewer gets installed, likewise also on the north. That was a big point of discussion in the planning commission hearing, was creating those green buffers on the north and the east, which are now reflected in the plat before you. He then states that two G was not properly placed into the P U D MDS. If you look on the same page of the PUD, page twelve, which is nine point six access, the last paragraph of that section says, "The developer shall be required to pave the I forty service road along the entire southern boundary of Tracks Four and Five to Oklahoma City paving standards at the time of development of either Track Four and Five." Now, my client doesn't own Track Four or Five, we're not here on Track Four or Five. We are here on Track Three. However, the addition of the word "at the time of development" is, of course, the standard practice in Oklahoma City.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Box.
So that is why that's in there. And finally, two H, it contemplates approved by Public Works Department. Nothing has been approved by the Public Works Department, so there's nothing to put into the MDS at this point. Quickly turning to the technical evaluations that exist for this particular plat, we agree with T E's one and then three through nine. We ask to delete T E two. It says, "Individual fire suppression systems are required. We are, of course, bringing public water, as this commission has routinely done. That is not an ordinance, that is not a subreg. If the council so desired to add that as a requirement, they could do so by ordinance. We're going to have fire hydrants, we're going to have public water." So in the same manner as you've done that routinely, we'd ask that that be deleted. And finally, T E three, we're fine with it, except we would ask to take out the word easement so that it just reads "A private roadway located in the northeast portion of the plat cannot be blocked and must be, remain open for access by the residents in the neighboring subdivision, emergency vehicles, and other delivery sanitation vehicles." So we are in agreement with all the T E's as read. Finally, again, this is a plat, this is not a relitigation of the P U D. I want to point to one thing in the comp plan. Under urban low, it actually establishes a minimum density range is as four dwelling units per acre. The plat before you is four point nine dwelling units per acre. It is compatible with the PUD, it is compatible with the long-range plan, it's compatible with the subdivision regulations and all ordinances that exist, and we would ask for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Box. I'll just note for the purposes of the record that according to our staff report, the design of the preliminary plat conforms with the subdivision regulations as they relate to access requirements for subdivisions with between, with over two hundred lots. The design purportedly also conforms to the requirements of P U D seventeen fifty. Mr. Privet, this is your word, sir. Do you have questions of the applicant or want him to spend any time clarifying anything for you right now?
Not right now. I know we got a few or more than a few signed up to speak, so.
Anybody else have questions for the applicant right now on that? Okay. All right, fair enough. So I will start with some folks who want to be heard on this. Mr. Work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman, my name is Kelly Work, and I am appearing on behalf of a group of the neighboring homeowners that are opposed to this request for preliminary plat approval for this Track Three of P U D seventeen fifty. My address is one oh-five North Hudson, Suite three oh-four. Mr. Box made reference to the hearings on the P U D seventeen fifty that took place back in March, or excuse me, in February of two thousand and twenty, and then to the City Council in April of two thousand and twenty. And, you know, there, he was referring to the fact that there was merely one person here. And I just wanted to mention that the, the official notice that went out for the rezoning request included eighty acres, these five different tracks that extended from Twenty-Ninth Street down to I forty. And the brief description, the only description, it says, "Brief description of proposed zoning district. The site will be developed in accordance with the regulation of the modified C-three community commercial district." That's all. That's the only description that is provided of this proposed P U D. And that's not even correct, that's wrong with respect to Track Three. There's no reference to C-three for Track Three. Track Three was entirely governed by the regulations of the R-two district. So if there perhaps was some confusion about what was being requested, I think it may relate to the inadequacy of the notice that was sent out to the surrounding property owners. Then we did send a letter and the handout that you all have is, is a letter that, that was submitted to the staff late, so you may not have had an opportunity to see it if it's been forwarded to you. But there are T E's that were required on the P U D, P U D seventeen fifty, of which this is a part, that had, that were not incorporated into the document, that was submitted by the applicant to the staff. And in particular, and this is, there is a copy of the council memo with the material that, that I just handed out. There was a T E that, that required, T E number two H, that required specify techniques in the master design statement that will be used to preserve South Post Road capacity, which could include providing a center turn lane and/or decel lanes with all new driveways on South Post Road as approved by the Public Works Department. There's no reference. That was made a T E that was recommended by the planning commission and then approved by the City Council. There's no reference to that that was incorporated in the document. And of course, the condition of Post Road is one of the significant issues that, that we have with respect to this proposed preliminary plat. The Post Road consists of merely twenty-two feet of paving. It lacks curb and gutter. It is classified as a minor arterial street. This is in this area that extends from Southeast Twenty-Ninth Street to I forty. The subdivision regulations would require for a minor arterial street forty-eight feet of paving with curb and gutter. What exists there today is twenty-two feet of paving, so it's grossly inadequate for density, for development at this level of density. The, the condition of Post Road is also an issue. It is currently rated, has a P C I rating of very poor, which is in the zero to thirty range on a scale of zero to one hundred. And although the two thousand and seventeen bond issue does provide for funds for resurfacing of Post Road in this area, it does not provide funding for any improvement, excuse me, for any widening or any other improvement of Post Road. This proposed density of two hundred and fifty-eight homes on this thirty-eight point six acres is just not compatible with the surrounding area. It's too great. The, the cell, other municipal facilities are also lacking. The closest police substation is fourteen miles away at Eighty-Ninth and South, at Eighty-Ninth and Santa Fe. Closest fire station is four point six miles away at seventy-one oh-one South Anderson. The, this area is characterized, as you can see from the aerial photo that is included with the staff report, as.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Work.
I'm sorry, sir.
Thirty seconds, thank you.
Is very rural residential in the area. They're large lots. The, Mr. Box made reference to the trees. The, this Track Three is one hundred percent covered with upland forest. The comprehensive plan calls for the preservation of sixty percent of the trees on this tract. What the applicant is proposing, other than the minimal strip of buffering along the east side and the north side of twenty-five feet, that they would be clearing the entire tract. There is a lack of any transition between the, what is proposed to be a much higher residential density and the surrounding area. And the, the streets to the east also are inadequate. Noma Road is the street that runs north and south, a quarter mile east of this tract, that also extends from I forty to Southeast Twenty-Ninth Street. And it is, consists of less than seventeen feet of paving, so it's very inadequate to handle.
Thank you, Mr. Work, I got to stop you there. I'm sure that we'll have questions on Noma, because that was, I've got some questions on it already, so I want to, but I want to, I want to invite other people up and give them an opportunity to be heard on this as well. Before I do that, let me just kind of review the comments that I've heard from Mr. Work that I'm sure are shared by many people, just for the, the commission's benefit, because I got a sneaking suspicion. How many people are here today on this item? Okay, that's what I thought, most everyone. And how many people are here today in opposition of this item? Okay, thank you very much. So we've heard, I guess for the eight people at home that are curious, there's a roomful of people and everyone that's in it is here in opposition, so just note that for the record. We've heard about road capacity and condition issues associated with Post, upland forest concerns, or the removal of trees, and a lack of transition between this development and surrounding developments, as well as the initial mention on concern for, I believe it's really roads to the east, which includes Noma, Lewis, and Coburn. So those are the things we've heard about. I'm going to call Sally Newey is the first person that I have. Ms. Newey, if there are other items you want us to be aware of as it relates to the plat or concerns with the plat, we would love to hear them, ma'am. Start out by giving us your name and address for the record, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I, I understand and I appreciate the fact that there are many people that are planning to speak. I just wanted to say that I'll be happy to answer any questions that any of the commissioners may have.
Oh, I have no doubt you'll be back.
Sally Newey, I live at thirty-three twenty-nine South Coburn Road. So we have allocated our, our grievances here, so my assignment is amenities. And that's one of the big problems. I work with City Midwest City Police Department in our apartment complexes in City Midwest City to get those kids to the YMCA to play basketball, and been doing that for quite a bit, because there's some apartment complexes that are six miles from here that have shootings by juveniles nonstop. So one of the most important things to me is kids' safety and the safety of, of those in our neighborhood, and we need these kids to have somewhere to go and exercise, walk around. We have Draper Lake that's miles away from where we are. This plan that Mr. Box showed you, there's, there's no playgrounds, there's nothing for these kids. There's no rec center, there is nothing to keep them engaged and active and doing something positive. There's no even courtyards or any open grass, as you can see. Setback is fifteen feet. So we are, I'm concerned, I've got two kids back there today, that any kid, they need somewhere to go. They need something to do that's constructive, other than just meandering around. So I truly believe that leaving some of these trees would allow for these kids to have play areas, woods to walk around in, following the cluster design that has been recommended by the city staff to have clusters of trees so that there is some wilderness, some exploring that these folks can do. The sidewalks, any type of walking trail would be a blessing, so they can go enjoy their thirty-eight acres. But none of that has been provided in this plat. It's clear it's just as many houses as they can fit in this area. And as the report from the staff showed, it's even overlapping on our easement, which is a major problem. These homes should not be built on Oklahoma County Street, which extends thirty feet from the middle of Coburn Road into this before the green belt. So, and the green belt, quite honestly, is not enough to make a barrier so that the transition is softened from where we all live on five acres. You know, I have five and a half acres right there. I'll have like fifteen houses up my driveway. So it is a lot of housing and nothing that we are used to. So one of the biggest factors out there is that we, we are a quiet neighborhood. We don't have any crime, we don't have anything like that going on. And so the distance, like Kelly said, from the fire station, the substation is at two forty and Shields, that is a fourteen-mile drive from where we are. So we are across the street from the City Midwest City. They do not respond in our area. They're across the other side of Twenty-Ninth Street. So some of the other things, the, the T E's that, that Kelly was mentioning are, those were conditions for this whole approval process, and all of you know me because I send you emails like every three days with more memos from concerned residents. And I'm sorry to be a pest, but you know what? This is not okay, not okay today, and it will not be okay in a year. It's too many houses. It's, we do not have the road for it. So Post Road is one small step up from a gravel road. And it cannot take potentially a thousand cars rolling out of there or five hundred cars, even for just this one, not to mention the thousands that are going to come from the two apartment complexes are going to be wrapped around the side of this PUD is going to, where it goes out there to the south, it'll have a whole nother apartment complex there. And the gravel road is gravel, and when you drive on it, you get nails in your tires because people dump over there, which they should not do, and that's one of the things that needs to be updated so that we have a way for people to get around in that area. And that was a condition, was supposed to be done. And then I guess Mr. Box revised his plan to skim that off of there, even though that was exactly how it was approved by you all and by the City Council. So it's unfortunate that the guidelines that you set in place, which, and the staff recommendations from the city were phenomenal. The fifty-foot green belt was a recommendation. Well, because we're all on pretty much five acres surrounding this, that would have been very helpful so that there was more of a transition to this dense housing where they're right on top of one another. And those are some basic recommendations that, excuse me?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. Those are some basic recommendations that the staff made that we wish that would have been heeded by the developers in this situation. The other concerns will be addressed by my neighbors. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. And just a couple of things, Ms. Newey, I did receive emails that were coming through and included them in the packet.
Yes.
If anybody else had sent correspondence to me or anyone else on the commission, we weren't not responding to you because we were not wanting to engage. We, we can't until these hearings on plat issues, so they're deemed quasi-judicial. And so as a result of that, we can't discuss them outside the hearing. You heard how I had engaged with an applicant on a zoning matter, which is very customary. But again, I apologize if you thought we weren't responding to you, but.
Oh, no, that was explained to me.
Yeah. Just a couple of other comments, too, for the purposes of just clarifying a couple of things. In our staff report, I will tell you, Development Service indicates that the plat, which is thirty-eight point six acres, includes one point two four acres of open space with point seven seven acres devoted to recreational improvements. That's what's required. The developer is providing approximately one point nine one acres of open space with the development. So whether, we can argue whether we think that's sufficient, but we know that it's adequate for the purposes of what the development regulations require, so just FYI there. And then one other thing I want to get clarification on. I remember when we were talking about the zoning item, and maybe someone from staff can, can correct me if I'm wrong. The two thousand and seventeen general obligation bond package included a resurfacing.
Yes, sir.
For Post, but not a widening.
That's what Todd Stone told us.
But that work has not been completed yet.
It's not even been started.
Got it, okay. I just want to make sure we were, we understood that that information given what was testified to about the road. So, okay, thank you very much. So what Mrs. Newey has added to our list of things we're concerned about, in addition to road capacity and condition issues in the upland forest, is, is safety, kids' safety, police and fire services in particular were notated of concern. So I appreciate you bringing those to our attention. The next person I have signed up to speak is Tim, and if I mispronounce your name, it's not intentional. Henke? Yes, sir, did I get close? Okay. Mr. Henke, what do you, want to give us your name and address and then tell us what you need to know besides what I just laid out?
Yes, Mr. Cravens, commission members, thanks for letting me speak today. My name's Tim Henke, I live at one zero two one five Southeast Fifty-Four Street, just south down Post Road from where this is planned. I've been living out there about ten years, retired out of the military. Really enjoy being in Oklahoma City. What I do not enjoy much is Post Road, very dangerous road. Just to set the stage for you, Tinker Air Force Base, this is one of the main feeders going into Tinker, so twenty-five thousand people a day go into and from work. And also, we have Carl Albert High School, Middle School, about a half mile north of this. So my kids, for years, fighting their way through this intersection to try to go to school. You can sit at this light already for about three or four cycles to try to get through there. So the density is very, is very tough, you know, at certain times of the day. And also, this road, Post Road, I, I'd like to call it a little country road, but it's a lot unsafe. I mean, it really is. It's so narrow, it has no shoulders, it has no turning lanes. And so I can't even imagine bringing a high-density housing plat into this area because the roads can't handle what, what they have right now. So I just wanted to kind of lay that out for you, just to paint a picture. For example, what about center turn lanes, de-acceleration? For example, what about center turn lanes, de-acceleration lanes? Right now, the Post Road, you can barely drive down it just because it's in such poor repair. And we appreciate the bond issue that was passed to get it repaved. But the bond issue does nothing about widening it to minimum standards or providing any other additional safety features. So, you put in a lot of commuters going to and from Tinker, and you put a lot of kids on the road driving up to school, and it's just a bad mix already. So, just a lot of concern about what this development would bring to this side of the, of the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate you and you coming down today and sharing your concerns with us. We really do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next person I have signed up to speak is Ralph Ashley. Mr. Ashley, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and tell us something we need to know if we haven't heard it already.
My name is Ralph Ashley. I live at 8900 Woodbrier Place. And I'm almost 66, and I've lived in Midwest City a mile within Tinker for the last over 62 years. I want to talk about the proposed density, or Mr. Box had mentioned about in this area. I believe it's too great and incompatible with the surrounding area. When you're talking 122 single-family lots and 68 duplexes, it doesn't seem like much on 38.6 acres. But in reality, it's a total of 258 residences. And if we're talking about four residents perhaps per home, now you're talking about over an extra 1,000 people and the possibility of almost an additional 500 vehicles. I've heard a lot of comments about Post Road, but one thing I haven't heard mentioned is the fact that when this shuts down Douglas, the fact that I live there and everyone else does, I can't imagine the traffic being diverted from Douglas to Post Road, the impact that's going to have, much less the effect of over an additional 1,000 residents. Currently, there's over 40 households on 150 acres. That's too much density that's come in for that area. Everyone lives on acreages. In fact, I think most live on at least one acre, up to 10 or 15. One thing I would say is, I believe that every person in this room, if at all possible, we all have chosen where we want to live based on the surrounding area. The impact that they're talking about for Track 3 is going to be insurmountable for the people that live in that area. I ask that you completely reject the fact that this Track 3 is coming into this area. And thank you all so much for your time.
Mr. Ashley, we appreciate your time. Thank you for coming down today. Mr. Ashley added a good, a good point for our discussion as a commission when that time comes to the list, which is the issue of density. So, I'll make sure and address that specifically for you, sir. Next person I have signed up to speak is Candace Dodd. Ms. Dodd, do you have things you'd like to add to the comments that have already been provided to us? Something else we haven't heard?
Well, he kind of stole my thunder there with the density because we live, I'm Candace Dodd, and I'm at 4701 South Post Road.
Thank you.
And I will just say, I learned about this entire development last week, so I'm really new to this game.
Where did you say you live, Ms. Dodd? I'm sorry.
On Post Road.
Okay.
Just a mile south.
South, so on the other side of 40?
44th, yes. On the other side of I-40, yes.
Got it, okay.
Yes. The density consideration is, is great. We have been notified that Douglas Boulevard will be shut down between 49th Street and 74th. All of that traffic will be deferred to Post Road, which will already be a crumbling effect. My family lives on a five-acre tract right now. When we approached the city to subdivide that into a four-acre and a one-acre, no, excuse me, a four-and-a-half acre and a one-and-a-half acre plat, we were denied. So, we came back with a one-acre plat and a four-acre plat, and we were approved for that. So, I'm surprised that this is being allowed at 4.9 dwellings per acre. We were not allowed to do that when we submitted our request to the city. My children wanted to live on the property with us, and they didn't really want a full acre to care for because they were coming from a city-type lot. But we had to come back and ask for an acre subdivide, and we were approved of that. But, so the inconsistencies in the approvals here are concerning as well. As far as the widening of Post Road, if you widen Post Road to the 40, 28 feet or whatever, 48 feet with urban guttering, you will take away my children's front yard completely. There is, there is not enough egress there to widen Post Road to 48 feet. And as has been said before, there is no urban guttering. When we have the rains that we have here in the spring, we have inches of rain that overswell Post Road from the, from the actual culverts. So, unless they're going to do considerable improvements on the road, this will never be a successful development. And it, and it will deteriorate the rest of our properties considerably.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Appreciate you coming down. I wrote down, I've just, and again, I'm just trying to paraphrase comments for later, so I'm certainly not trying to put words in anyone's mouth, so don't let me do that. But inconsistency of approvals and decisions is a concern for you. And then, the other thing I heard you say that I hadn't heard yet was flooding issues along Post Road. So, does, and then you echoed the density comment as well, and roads, and I heard you loud and clear, so. Sherry Cook. Come on down, Ms. Cook. You're the next contestant on The Price is Right. Unfortunately, we're not spending for money today, but...
I'm holding slow.
Would you mind pulling that microphone down? You're just too tall for it. There you go. Start out by giving us your name and address, ma'am.
Sherry Cook. I'm at 3500 Noma Road.
Welcome.
And this whole thing has made me feel disrespected. I feel disregarded, and I feel devalued. I've lived in the same house for more than 50 years. I chose this particular neighborhood because it fit the criterion I needed to raise my kids in a safe place. I was picky. It had to be a rural setting, not overcrowded. It had to be well-water, smaller schools, close to work, not too far from medical and shopping. And by the way, all three of my kids turned out to be true assets to society. And part of that is due to my neighborhood. We scraped and saved every penny, begged and borrowed what we could to buy the land and build a house. Blood, sweat, tears, and joy went into it. It's more than just a financial investment. Any kind of investment that you can make, we put into it. Emotional, physical, psychological, you name it. Over 50 years, it's been our home, our safe haven. My children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren. Well, they're all grown. They all have their own houses. But this homestead is still their home, and now it's in jeopardy. A newcomer to the neighborhood insists I change my lifestyle to fit his wants. Irregardless of what my needs are, he's forcing urban living on us. We're all quite content with rural lifestyle. We do not want or need a sudden influx of 1,000 or more new neighbors. It's not healthy physically or mentally to crowd that many people so close together. I don't need or want city water. I can't afford another utility bill. I'm on a fixed income that can't keep up with inflation. Yes, the developer said he'd pay to have the water line running. But, a gentleman from the city, employed by the city, who was kind enough to come to our neighborhood meeting and explain that on top of what the developer pays, property owners would have a lien placed on their property. DEQ suggested I could expect $13,000 per acre. I have five acres. That's $65,000. Just to keep a clear title on my home. I can't pay it. I can't sell the place with that kind of a lien on it. I have to pay property taxes on the assessed value. I'm being forced out. My home is being devalued. I can't afford to live there, and I can't afford to leave. It really puts me in a bind, and I am too old for this kind of stress and this kind of worry. As I said, I feel disrespected by the developer for not thinking deep enough into the impact of his project, for not recognizing our right to our lifestyle. If he wants to be part of our community, he's the one who should adapt. I feel disregarded by not being properly notified by all these changes, by the zoning change. I didn't know about this till after Christmas this year.
Just this past Christmas.
Mr. Stone should have made some kind of effort to notify all of us of the pending changes. My fingers don't work. All these changes will drastically affect my neighborhood and my life. I feel devalued as a person. Over 50 years, I've contributed to maintaining a healthy, contented neighborhood. Now, a newcomer appears and obliterates my opinions, my needs, my wants, my sense of serenity. I didn't move to my neighborhood to change it to suit my needs. I came to blend in and be accepted. In my opinion, the developer should do the same. I'm hoping with all my heart that underneath all that project excitement, he has the integrity and the compassion to do the right thing and change his plans. Thank you all for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. We appreciate you coming down today. One thing I added to the list, Ms. Cook, based on your comments that I want to come back to, and Mr. Work also addressed this, was the notice of hearing, issues or concerns there. I want to, I'll come back and address that when we speak as a commission in a little bit. Thank you again, Ms. Cook.
Mr. Chairman, maybe we should address, because this is pretty pressing, the issue of this lien. And I don't think I completely understood what she explained. Can we address that issue? Because I do think that's very important.
I've got that written down. I'd like to get through, if you don't mind. I'd like to, I mean, I'm happy to get staff to comment on it now. I, I think that was something that was dealt with a different way, but does anybody have information they want to share briefly?
So, it, it's an issue, there are contamination issues east of here.
Is that attributable to that old Eagle?
Yes.
Yeah.
It has nothing to do with this. One of the first bits of misinformation that was put out was that somehow the development of this tract was going to put an obligation on the neighbors to spend $13,000 per acre to bring public water. Of course, that is absolutely false. My client bears 100% of the cost to bring water and sewer to the development. The issue of the, is it Eagle Lake, Eagle Industries?
Eagle, Eagle Industries, that's a, it's a super fund side.
The issue of Eagle Industry is completely separate. What Councilman Stone said at the meeting was that, you know, there is some benefit in continuing to drag that water, the public water, to the east so that the people that are on contaminated water are closer now to accessing the public water system. But there is no obligation that is being put upon anyone in this room. There will be no liens put upon anyone in this room based upon anything to do with this plat.
Can someone from city staff confirm that? With all due respect to Mr. Box, I think the residents would prefer to hear from somebody from the City of Oklahoma City as opposed to the applicant.
Dustin Segre's Utilities Department. Mr. Box is correct that the developer is 100% responsible for bringing city utilities into his development.
And 100% means Ms. Cook's concern about what she said about the lien and the $13,000 per acre is not an expense that she's going to endure should this project proceed? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Now, when this project comes through, and if they want to connect to the city system at that time, then they would go through the normal processes and then the permits and such to be able to connect their property to the city facilities if they, if they wish.
If they want to connect?
Correct.
Yeah. And that's, there's a, that's because there's a connection fee charged.
Correct. And if they improve their land that requires a building permit to be pulled and to be issued, then it requires to bring the lot up to standard code, in which would be required to be able to connect to the city's facilities if they're within 750 feet.
Okay. So, if, if a lot is within 750 feet of a sewer line, and they pull a building permit to complete improvements to their property, at that point, they would be required to connect?
Yes.
And what is that connection fee?
I think it's, they would have to go through the regular permit. It's based upon their water meter size, and I don't have those numbers off the top of my head.
So, a residential meter is different than a commercial meter and so forth?
Correct.
In terms of the cost?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does that help you, Commissioner Payton? Okay. I've got a few more people signed up here to speak, so I'd like to give anybody an opportunity to be heard that wants to. I would like to limit comments to things we haven't heard yet, okay? Just out of respect for everybody that's here today. And again, I've got a laundry list going. You've heard what they are. So, if you, if you have something to add, please feel free to do it because we certainly want to hear anything that we haven't heard so we can discuss it appropriately. But Max Williams.
I apologize before I start. I've lived in this area for over 50 years. And you folks have talked about everything in the world except traffic, safety of the children getting to the schools, to the buses. There's a lot more to this than just building old buildings and people moving in them and parking their cars on the curb. Even with the folks that you're going to put in there, there's going to be families, there's going to be children. Where are they going to play, in the street? You folks need to think about something before you act. And I'm just a grumpy old man, and I promise you, you folks are going to hear from me more because I've been living there forever. And the good Lord willing, the creeks don't rise, I'm going to live forever. But I will pester you folks if this thing comes about. I can promise you that. And that's just about as plain as I can say it.
Mr. Williams, would you mind giving us your, formally your name and address for the record?
My name is Max Williams. I live at 3212 Noma Road. My zip code, 73150. My telephone number is area code 405. 732-2681. Or, area code 405.
Mr. Williams, we appreciate you coming down today.
That's my cell number. And I'll be glad to talk with any of you folks anytime because other than a few old doctors that I'm trying to get rid of, I don't have anything else to do except argue with you.
Fair enough. Appreciate you coming down, and we are grateful for your service, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next person that I have signed up to speak on this is Mark, I believe it, is it Nave? Mr. Nave, give us your name and address, sir.
Mark Nave, I'm at 3600 South Post Road.
Oh, you got to wait till you get to the microphone. There's three people at home.
I'm sorry. I'm Mark Nave. I'm at 3600 South Post Road. It's right there to the left of the R1 where it says D, right on the black line.
Okay.
So, that black line is on my shop. There is no space between our property line and the southern border of that at all. As a matter of fact, the fence is probably going to be within five feet of my shop. And that's just a recreational shop of our own. You know what I mean? That we do things there, it's nothing. But we would like space around it. We would like trees on the southern part, too, just like they have on the north and the east side. Water is a problem. Everybody's talked, I don't want to beat the, you know, the road to death and stuff. We already know Post Road isn't very well situated for the current way things are or any improvements or... But, right here on this diagram where it says East I-40 Service Road, that's gravel. And when it rains, that does wash out regularly. And I even push gravel back up there with my own tractor on a regular basis. I'd say two or three times a year. So that's one thing about the water flowing and the egress. In 2005, my parents wanted to retire and come out here and live with me in this area. And I contacted the city about building another house on that property. We have 1.8 acres. And they said I wasn't allowed to have two houses on 1.8 because we're only allowed one acre per house. And I understand that the zoning has changed and things, but we didn't get notice on this either. And even if we did get notice, we would have assumed that that's about 40 acres and above, that would have been about 40 houses, not 200 plus. So it wouldn't have raised our antennas. We wouldn't have thought much about it because we didn't know the details and what all it entailed. So that was one thing. If they were all built like these houses over here at Chandler's Crossing, and there was 40 in there, we wouldn't be having this meeting, I don't think. You know? So, but anyway, I know somebody else mentioned this, and I think you might be aware that Tinker is closing Douglas between 44th and 74th.
Yeah, we, yeah.
So that will be an issue in the near future, too. So, but I think that's about, my main concern is, since I live right there on the line and there is no space between my fence and the backyard of those houses on that southern row, I would like to have some space. You know, I know it's 25 around the, around the north and the east. And I think originally, they wanted to talk about 50, and people wanted 100, but we have zero right now. So we would like something on the south end. Because, you know, we're also going to get pushed from the, from the south with that other side that doesn't have anything to do with this right now. And then if they widen post, so our, we're just getting crushed, you know, on all four sides. At least three sides, for sure. But anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Nave. We appreciate you coming down today. We really mean that. The next person I have signed up to speak is Jay Smalley. Mr. Smalley, if you would, give us your name and address, and then if there's something you want to add to the list, let me know.
Yes, sir. I'm Jay Smalley, and I live in the other D down there at the bottom south of that corner. You see right at the bottom half? All right. That house right there where the R1 is?
Yep. Over to the right, right there?
Yes, sir. It's 3602 South Post.
Okay.
Okay. Like Mark was saying, we're not getting those trees or everything down there at the bottom. Okay? Or, you know, some kind of sound deadening from that property above or the property below it. We're getting sandwiched from all four sides. And I don't know if y'all remember, but there was a trailer park south of there earlier. And when that got moved out, a lot of those people walking around your yard trying to get into your shop and everything else had left. So now the trailer park was gone, crime was gone. Now you want to throw 500 in front of us and 200 behind us. Okay? Now, my stepdaughter used to go to school at Carl Albert. She couldn't ride the bus. There's no sidewalks up there. They won't put a sidewalk in because it's not a four-lane road. So the buses ain't even going to be able to come get these kids. So the traffic already running up to Carl Albert, if you come out in that area, is terrible, especially after COVID opened up. So there's traffic coming from all four sides of 29th Street. The wildlife that's in there, in that area alone, you can walk out back, I might have five, six deer standing in my backyard. Where are they going to go? Where's all them skunks and all them raccoons and everything? Well, they're going to start invading our place. They're going to start heading south. You know, just like, just like when they shut that trailer park down, I ended up with everybody's animals because they moved out. Couldn't get rid of their animals. And I was constantly stray dogs, stray cats, everything. And just like Mark was saying, we're getting sandwiched from all four sides. You widen post, you take up that side. You put that trailer, or, what do they call it? Apartments below us, south of us, you're squishing us on that side. And they're not showing anything on the south side of this plot to keep any sound barrier. They got me surrounded. So, I mean, if that road right there, when Tony Streetcar moved across, we had to go over and tell them to turn down the music at 10 o'clock at night. We don't want the same situation above us and, you know, below us. You know, and there's been fatal accidents coming across that 40 overpass right there. Because we have to pull out like we're in race cars to get out of there because that's the only way to get out of there. You look to your south, and they're coming over that overpass. And I mean, it's dangerous right there. So now you're going to add how many cars back there and make it even more dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smalley. I appreciate you coming down. Thanks for sharing your comments. And one thing I added to your, to your list, just as a general comment, not specific to your tract, but generally was the wildlife issue. So I've added that to the list as well. So we'll address, we'll address that. Last person I have signed up to speak is Jason Carlisle. Mr. Carlisle, you lost the lottery to speak last. Give us purportedly, purportedly. Give us your name and address for the record, and let me know if there's anything else we need to add to this list of concerns we've got going.
Okay. Jason Carlisle, 3400 South Coburn Road. So I live on the northeast corner of this plat. I've lived there for 41 years, my entire life. Third generation. My family has been there since the 50s. The concern with the, our concern, I guess, is the density and the continuity for our neighborhood. Coburn, DeLois, this all, it's not a through street. So it's private, it's secluded, it's, it's, it's not highly trafficked. From the perspective of my front yard, I can see exactly two of my neighbors. And the way this is, this is planned, we're going to go from looking at the upland, you know, the upland forest to quadplexes, potentially. So we have concerns with that. We don't even have a fence on our yard. You know, we have five acres. It's very rural living. And so we have concerns with the, with potential property crime, the noise that that's going to entail, and just the flow of our neighborhood. Essentially, when you come down the street, all the properties are spaced out, and then you're going to come into the back end of this monstrosity, I guess you would call it. And I also, so I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I know the wildlife and the forest is a concern to the people around there. There's whitetail deer, there's fox, all sorts of wildlife that live over there. And when you get rid of that, there's really no consideration in this plat for the preservation of the trees and the forest or the wildlife. And so that's pretty much, pretty much my main concern.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
We appreciate you. Thanks for coming down, and thanks for sharing your comments with us today. Okay. So that's the last person I had signed up to speak. Out of an abundance of caution, is there anybody else that wants to be heard on this item or to add something that we haven't heard already? Okay. So, sir in the hat back there, if you want to come up and give us your name and address for the record, please. And at this point, if you could, if it's something that's not on the list, let us know. Otherwise, I'd like to see if there's anything else out there that we need to add, okay?
Yes, sir. I'll, I've tried to keep track of what everybody said. My name's Alan Burgett. I'm Oklahoma City Police Department, retired, rode this area. I don't live in the vicinity of this area here.
What is your address for the record, sir?
17300 Melody Lane.
Thank you very much.
I'm in this, it's further east.
Okay.
But anyway, these are my friends and people who I served as a police officer. And when they, we were talking about this, and so they asked me to come to their meeting and stuff. I've already been in contact with Mr. Privet here about some developers that are trying to rezone some properties out by where I live. But anyway, I'll try to get sound track here with this particular deal, and I'll just kind of give a little bit of notes about as far as the police department, my understanding where we're at. Obviously, the closest station is quite a ways from this development. Right now, my understanding, Santa Fe Division's got 143 officer positions available. 119 of those were filled, which leaves about 24 officers short, which basically is an entire shift of officers that we are short currently right now for the police department. It also, and I'll leave that part of that there, but some of the other things that these folks brought up as far as getting on city water and septic things of that nature, you know, we already, the people who are in Oklahoma City Limits out there right now that get city water and stuff, that's usually get from Draper Lake, which gets pumped in from Magee Creek. Likewise, up north, you know, Hefner gets filled by Canton Lake and stuff. So this just adds a lot more stress to, and money for taxpayers when they're trying to get additional water supplies up here. They say it's not going to cost anything to these folks, but it is. It will increase our taxes. And I can also say that, you know, on their behalf here, we as citizens do not get enough notification when these developers are coming out here trying to get these properties rezoned. It's very limited. The other cities that surround Oklahoma City, Choctaw, Norman, Edmond, I know Choctaw for a fact. They have to put a sign up there any time they're going to request rezoning. So we get blindsided as citizens. We get blindsided when these developers come in here because, you know, we live on five-acre tracts or 100-acre tracts or something like that, and they only have to notify within three, people within 300 feet. Well, most five-acre tracts is 330 by 660. So they may only have to notify half a dozen folks. So I would like to, you know, and we're starting a petition to get that city ordinance changed right now. So I think that's probably about all I can add to that. I appreciate y'all's time.
We appreciate you a lot. Thank you very much. I saw two, two other people raise their hands. I believe you raised your hand, sir. If you would, give us your name and address for the record, and if there's anything we haven't heard, let us know.
My name is Larry Sales. I live at 3600 South Noma Road, Oklahoma City, which again is just east of this development we're talking about. And I guess my main concern may be going back to the water district here. The gentleman who was out at Crest Baptist Church the day that we had a meeting up there, my property butts up to an easement at the back part of our property. There's actually 10 acres in the back there. There's an easement that runs, I believe, Midwest City Water Plant, which is northeast of this development here. And I believe it runs to Stanley Draper. Is that correct? Okay. At the meeting we had there, I asked specifically about that because I know for a fact, we've been back there, and we've seen the manhole cover. So I'm still unsure because I know that Stanley Draper is run by the City of Oklahoma City, correct? And everything there. But I guess it passes through Oklahoma City property up to the Midwest City Water Treatment Plant. And we've heard that, I guess, they're going to bring Midwest City water across over to the ball fields they're building down towards Douglas. So I'm just curious on that side of it about, I'm not sure if water's coming from Douglas, where they're bringing it for this new development here or where they're bringing the water from. So nothing makes, or my concern is basically what all the other neighbors that I have that live here have the same concern. So I won't take much of your time. I just need a clarification on that to see if that's where they're, in fact, when they do bring water to this new development that Mr. Box is talking about, if they're bringing it from the Midwest Cities area over there or where exactly it's coming from.
Mr. Sales, I will get you that answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down today. I had one other person who raised her hand. You, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Justin Smalley. I live at 3602 South Post. It's one of the second, the two houses on the bottom. I have a couple of concerns with the, right now on the service road in the mornings, there's a lot of the semi trucks pulling through. They have an excavated site that they're bringing gravel and dirt through. And when I was working graveyards, I know I'd be coming over the bridge, and there'd be like three semi trucks waiting. I know that's talking about the road and the traffic and stuff. I just thought it was a particular issue because they're using that service road every day. And it's causing dust to go across I, Post Road and stuff. So it's kind of screwing up the, your view from when you go over the bridge. Now you've got a dust cloud blocking it. I also have a couple of concerns about the sound levels with the, getting only 25 boundary, foot boundary of the trees, you're increasing the decimals and stuff. Because we're, right now, that little lot in front of us, I know that's not part of it, but they're clearing trees right now, and it's significantly louder at our house right now. And I know that with 200-plus neighbors, it's going to increase the noise level around there. I don't know if that's something that's really an issue that we can talk about. Also, I have an electric, the electric lines that run down that black line, I was concerned on what's going to happen with those because they're feeding our two houses and also, I think, these corner houses over here. If they're doing construction, are they going to end up trying to move those underground to make it to where the residential, they won't have any electric lines running through the neighborhood? Because if that's going to be the case, then now I'm going to have a couple, maybe like a month or so, with issues with electricity now because they're going to be addressing power lines and stuff. And then we also have that little gap there for the OGN, the 10-foot buffer or whatever. So that way, the trees are all cut down there. Is that going to be included? Things like that. Sorry, I don't have more specifics. I'm kind of winging it right now, so.
I get it. Well, I'll try to have the, the utility and electric easement there addressed. I'll try to get to the bottom of that for you if I can.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You bet. Okay. I'm going to turn the discussion for the commission at this point, or to the commission at this point. We probably are going to have lots of questions. We may bring some people back up. But we're going to turn our discussion kind of inwardly here. A couple of things at the outset that I think I may want to try to just address because they are city and in one case, state issues. Mr. Smalley, Justin, not Jay, the sound level issue you brought up. Residential property, which this, the underlying zoning for this would be, decimal levels are 55 per ordinance. So just like in my neighborhood, that's the limit. In this neighborhood, that'd be the limit. I don't know if your property is zoned R1 or if it's zoned AA. But... Understood. If it's zoned, if it's zoned R1, the decimal level requirement is 55. So that's the ordinance on that. I just want to make sure you know that. The notice of hearing issue, we are empathetic to that concern. It is dictated by state statute. You all have a state representative and a state senator, and I would highly encourage you to contact them. And somebody said they were working on a petition relating to city ordinance. I would encourage you to include those folks in your discussions. If city staff could clarify, JJ, I bet you know this off the top of your head. It's 300 feet unless a certain number of residents aren't notified, and then those concentric circles go out. What is that number of residents? Hey, I knew Cindy'd help you.
On a plat, it's 100 feet.
It's 100 feet. What was it, what was it on the zoning? Because that's...
Zoning, zoning is every property owner within 300 feet.
And what happens if you don't hit one person within 300 feet?
If there are not 10 individual owners within...
10 distinct individual owners?
10 distinct individual owners within 300 feet. The radius is extended in 100-foot increments until you get 10 people, whether that's another 100 feet or 1,000 feet.
Okay. And is the plat distance for notice, is that also something that was done by state statute?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I want to talk about a couple of specifics there then. Well, appreciate your mention. The state statute is on the distance, right? And then on the number. If it's true what they're saying that some of the neighboring cities do more, I think, I would assume that whatever the state statute is, we could do more. Not necessarily with the number of feet, but with the description. Because I do want to hear more about what was the description that went out on the PUD. If what Mr. Work read was completely off, or maybe I missed something. So our description, whether it could be better. And second was the signage. In a lot of communities, too, where there's signs. I think we brought that up before. Is state statute may not require a sign, but what is the feasibility of using signs? I assume when they say they're going to their city councilman, I assume when they say they're going to their city councilman, those are issues that are at the city, not the state.
Yeah.
And so, not just comparing to the nearby cities, but it is relevant, what other communities do, and if we do the minimum, or if there's more we should do.
Yeah. I agree with you. Of course, that's not something that our commission can decide, but I'm encouraging you and I'm trying to give you the resources for how to continue those conversations productively. Reaching out to your councilperson is certainly the first path to take. But reaching out to your state senator and your state legislator too, to let them know that you have concerns over the distance requirements that are, that are there in place, that's worthwhile. And we've made that comment. I know you don't want to go back and watch our previous meetings, but we've made this comment many times to residents, encouraging them to do that. For us, it's very difficult because every case is slightly different and everybody thinks you should have done something slightly different. The city follows the state statute, at least to our knowledge in every case. We believe that was followed here. And so, we will operate within that framework and it is not within our purview to alter that. That's not something this body has the, the authority to do. But I hear, I hear your concern there and I understand it.
And Mr. Chair, then either whether now or you want to do it later, I would like to hear again, what was the description that went out on the PUD? That's, when I, when I get into this, it's going to be more about, um, I'm going to go ahead and say it now. These are some of the most compelling concerns I've heard before, but it seems like it was at the PUD stage that I was missing these concerns. So, I am concerned with what was the notice that went out with the PUD. I don't know what, what's within our purview to even consider back that far, but I still care. And Mr. Work brought up what the description was on the notice at that time.
Got it.
Whether you want to cover it now or later, I want to, I want to hear that again and understand it.
Okay. Okay. We can, I, I will come, I will come back to that. One other thing I, I want to address because it was directed at, at our body, so to speak, is just the inconsistency of planning commission approvals. I'll just tell you, every case is looked at on an independent basis and there are a litany of factors that we look at. Each commissioner may look at those factors differently as they weigh them on a, you know, kind of a pro-con basis or an impact basis. The way I view an incompatibility problem may be different than the way my fellow commissioners view a compatibility problem, for example. So, it's very difficult to take one case and compare it to another. It just doesn't, it just doesn't work. So, we don't, we try to apply objective principles by which we review these things. We rely on our subdivision regulations. We rely on our zoning ordinances. We rely on our city staff reports to help keep us in an objective fairway to the best of our ability. But from the outside looking in, I can understand why there would be concern over inconsistency. If you look at one thing, you think, wait a minute, these people are arguing over one acre. But what you may not know is that that one acre, a mile to the west, the, you know, Luda, right? The underlying land use is designated as, you know, rural medium. And the land right across to the east has been designated urban low. And so, that changes our view of that parcel and how we review it. Similarly, zoning matters. And like I said to Mr. Smalley, Justin, not Jay, there is instances where people have an underlying zoning of residential and right across the street, there's an agriculture, what we call AA zone property, and they can build a metal building there by, by permit. They can just go grab a metal bill, go grab a permit and build a metal building. And people come in and wonder about that. So, those are just a couple of things I want to make sure you all are aware of that we're having to kind of meander through a little bit. But the rest of that are issues that I think, to some extent, we can discuss as a commission. And again, for the benefit of commissioners, I'll just summarize them and then I'll let Commissioner Privet, this is your ward, so I'll let you guide our discussion through these items if you'd like. But we have the issue of, that Mr. Work brought up, of the missing technical evaluation, number two. We have road capacity and condition issues, upland forest concerns, lack of transition between this development and the surrounding area, safety and kids' safety, and that extended to bus service, which I heard somebody say. Crime and fire services, police station proximity, density concerns, flooding, including service road issues with it washing out, traffic on the Douglas closure, semis using the surface road, tinker, expansion, et cetera. And then, just the disruption of wildlife. Those are the common concerns that were shared. Do you want to hear anything specific first from applicant or Mr. Work?
Yes. I know about the service road and it doesn't really concern us on this plat, but what I've been told and what I've read in the MDS is that it will be paved to city standards and-
Who's paving that to city standard?
Uh, David, developer is.
The developer, the, the owner and developer of track four and five, which is separate from this client, but Mr. Grubbs also represents that client and is working with city right now to submit permit plans to pave that.
The other thing was that it's going to, is it just going to end? Like, it's going to stop right there and not go all the way to, what was that, Cobra?
Correct. It'll stop at the edge of the property.
Right. Does there any kind of turnaround there, or is it just?
Whatever the city requires us to do based upon, you know, city standards.
All right. And, let's see, I guess my, the missing TE, what-
Yeah. So, I'll, can I address that real briefly, Mr. Privet? So, if you look at the TE, what it says is, specify techniques in the master design statement that will be used to preserve post-road capacity, which could include providing center turn lane and/or decel lanes with new driveways on South Post as approved by Public Works. Well, of course, Public Works can't approve anything until we move forward with the development. If staff so desires, we can go back and modify the MDS once Public Works has approved whatever those changes are. But there's nothing now to put in the MDS because Public Works hasn't been presented an opportunity to actually approve any design plans. They will do that, assuming that we get approval here, as we move forward. It's also worth noting-
Just, just one second. For clarification purposes, what you're saying is that if the preliminary plat is approved, at that point, Public Works then provides you comments on what would be required-
Sure.
-underneath the MDS? And that, would that be done before a final plat?
That would be during the process of the same. Or perhaps it's during development of tracks one and two, or, which are on the west side of Post Road.
Who has the authority to make that decision, in your opinion?
The Public Works.
Okay.
Department.
We need comment from somebody from Public Works in just a minute.
So, then, let me briefly explain the process. After we leave here, we go back and modify the PUD according to the TEs that have been recommended in, in motion. Only after development services staff is satisfied that we have met the intent of the technical evaluations, do they allow the PUD to move forward to city council. That is the same process that happened in this case as it does in every other case. Development Services is the gatekeeper to allow something to go on to city council. So, all of those things happened here in the same manner as they always do. May I address the, the question about the electric that was brought up?
Well, give, give me just one second. The, actually, I guess that would be helpful because that was something that I didn't know and I'm assuming that-
So, it'll be buried here as, as part of our development. Things that are outside of this development, I, I am not sure of. But all of the utilities and infrastructure that we will have as part of ours will be buried. I did take a-
Wait, just a second, just a second. On that, so, that was, uh, Justin Smalley's question was on the LHC. So, the lines, they'll, if they have to be relocated, I mean, they're in an easement, which you don't control.
Correct.
Right? So, if they had, if they had to be relocated, that would have to be done in conjunction with OGN. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
In terms of notice, I just, Mr. Work handed me the, the copy he brought. It's worth noting, this was zoned R1 before we went to PUD 1750. And I'll read you what the notice says. Proposed use, the purpose of this request is to permit commercial and residential development. So, the notice identified both residential and commercial development. Of course, we have multiple tracks that existed within that PUD. And again, we weren't going from AA. We were going from R1, and in this case, to quadplex, but here we are with predominantly R1 and a few duplex lots.
The pre-existing zoning prior to PUD 1750 was R1, single-family residential, 6,000-square-foot lots.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? And then, the notice requirement, which Municipal Councilor Susan Randall has pulled up, I will confirm what he's reviewing. Per the city council packet, the proposed use of this request is to permit commercial and residential development.
And we don't send a notice. I mean, I, all of you know, but notice that we, we submit the application, we submit the ownership list, staff checks to confirm it meets ordinance and state statute requirements. Staff sends out the notice.
And just real quickly, since I brought it up, yeah, when I, I believe, Mr. Work, when you read it, you'd only read that brief description piece, but as I looked at it, right above is where it says, proposed use and included residential. So, it was more clear in the line right above it. So, I, I was concerned, but it seems like the description was appropriate.
I, I'm, I'm still concerned. I share your concern still and you've expressed that concern before. And I think we should express it again and, and maybe take the added step of expressing that more vocally. Just because I think we're the ones hearing, I mean, I know the city council hears these rezoning requests too, but I think it may be incumbent upon us, UDC, Commissioner Hinkle, or somebody should, we should author something to make the city council aware of this concern. But again, I want to reiterate to the public that the real power of that is for each of you to talk to all the political subdivisions that are involved here. And notably, that would also have to include the state in addition to the city, so.
In term, one, I think one other item that was brought up that perhaps was relevant to, to us was amenities. I know you referenced the total number of acres that exist for-
1.91 acres of open space and common area has been provided with the development.
So, it not, it, you don't ever see a plat that identifies amenities in the preliminary plat stage. What you see is the standard TE, which here is TE4, that says, a letter from the developer must be submitted with final plat stating the type of amenities proposed and their timing of construction. We, we agreed to that TE.
Understood. And so, at the final plat, you'd be providing that information to Ms. Newey, who raised that concern, and her neighbors. They would be apprised of that?
Noticed.
Okay. And one thing I want to come back to too, that I want to understand better, and it seemed like you were nodding, Mr. Sales made the comment about water service. I saw you nodding about Midwest City. Is that where the water service is coming from?
It, it is coming from the west. Both the sewer and the public water are coming from the west along Southeast 29th and, and part of the Midwest City site.
Yeah. We have a, they're extending, proposing to extend Oklahoma City facilities that is on Southwest 29th from the west to their development.
Where's that coming from? Like, where, like, where is it? Is it closer to Douglas or?
It's where the, they're extending, Midwest City is extending the, past their sports complex, and then they are proposing to pick up where Midwest City left off and extend it to their sub-development.
Got it.
Yeah.
Open the west.
Yeah. I have not seen plans, so I can't tell the exact alignment of it yet, but yeah, it's coming from that Midwest City complex. But it is Oklahoma City facility and Oklahoma City Water, answer.
One, one other thing that came up, I remember this, and to be fair, I refreshed my recollection by watching the hearing. We talked about a park that Midwest City was building.
Yes. The sports complex.
And forgive me, where is that in the process? Is that-
Currently, right now, the, the water plants have been approved and they sent them back to Midwest City. So, they're in the process of actually getting DEQ approval for that and going to start construction soon.
I think construction's almost done. If you drive by it, they are almost to a CO.
So, okay. And I, and I just recall from our discussion that park was part of-
Correct. Yeah. Currently, right now, Midwest City is using their water source from their water line until such time that they extend our water line to the main. And so, they're going to be using their water for the irrigation and using our water system for the domestic for that sports complex.
Got it.
So, although that the sports complex may be almost completed, the water line has not been yet installed yet.
Got it. Okay. All right. Thank you very much for confirming that for me. Mr. Sales, I hope that was helpful to you, sir, on your water question.
Could we get a, the, the question that Mr. Sales is asking away from the microphone is clarification on the easement from Draper?
I, I just checked our GIS map and everything. I do not show a water line or a sewer line going through anywhere near this facility and this partial land from the water plant.
From there?
Yeah. That, that I am aware of, that shows up on our GIS system.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification on that item. Okay.
Then, David, is the sewer going to require a lift station?
No. There's an existing lift station that's already out there. Ours will gravity, so we don't have a lift station because of this development. No, sir.
Commissioner Privet, do you have anything else that you want to get addressed by the applicant or?
As far as buffering on that south side, is there anything there? Is it just fence or?
It will be fence, yes, sir.
Be fence, but that's it?
So, one of the, I mean, one of the things that, of course, we're facing with this plat is, in order to meet the subregs, we have to stub a street to the south because the zoning that exists to our south is not AA, it's R1, single-family. And so, the long-range plan contemplates redevelopment of that. And so, the reason that you forced a buffer upon us at the, the PUD stage was, to the east and to the north, is developed differently. Here, it's zoned similarly to what we have, and that's why you see a street stub to the south to satisfy your subdivision regulations.
Is there not anything we can do with the existing houses? There's only, what, two, three there on the south side?
Let me, let me-
Sure. Right here.
Miss, Mr. Nave, right?
Yes, yes.
If, you can go to that microphone right there.
Sorry, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine.
So, I'm at 3600 South Post Road, which is the one on the left, right there in R1, on the left side. And, uh, one thing that I failed to mention, and I don't know if it's going to have a bearing on this or not, but there is an easement there for a big gas line that's probably three-foot diameter. And it is on that black line that's in that picture and it is going east, northeast.
And that, that easement would-
They'll have to deal with that, for sure.
They'll have to deal with that.
But I just didn't know if that size of a gas line going that direction would allow, you know, it'd have to be moved or, or anything.
If it's high pressure, yeah, it would be an issue.
But, uh, yeah, we're, we're R1 and there's only two houses there. So, regardless if we're going to be surrounded by the other, by the other codes, we're still R1, you know? But here, we're being kind of hung out to dry, I feel like, because a fence isn't going to do it because what Smalley said, not Jay, but Justin, you know, the sound. Because what Jay, what, what Justin didn't say was, the clearing on the south end over by I-40 right now for the next project has nothing to do with this one. But that project, the, just the 30 or 40 feet of trees they cleared for that has increased the highway noise tremendously, you know? So, you know, we feel like we're going to get highway noise from the south and then new neighbors from the north, you know, if we don't have a buffer there on the north for us.
Thank you, Mr. Nave. We appreciate it.
The pipeline I was concerned about.
So, yeah, as it relates to, to a buffer, what we can agree to is the same 25-foot tree buffer that exists on the north and the east. We can do that in the south for the first six lots, which will cover more than where those, those homes are. So, it would include the common area and then the first six, the first six lots moving from, yes, ma'am, moving from west. So, one, two, three, four, five. So, it goes past where that structure is.
I don't think I-
At the end of their property, just out of curiosity?
I don't know.
I mean, I know that you, I know that you track four to your south connects to track three, which is why we required the connection, but how far does your property go to the west? In other words, is it this, I mean?
Here's to me, the edge of track six, but that's just looking at aerial and-
Cindy, could you go to the zoning map?
That's close, right?
We can, we can agree to go, there you go. We can go all the way to the east property line, which you can see is not part of 1750.
For the purposes of clarifying our, our conversation for the folks here and us, that would include, as displayed on the tentative preliminary plat, the CA and then how many lots to the east?
Nine.
Nine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nine. The CA, the, the common area plus nine lots, which gets to the, which matches the requirements we have on the north and the east. Because east of lot nine is then, it's not Mr. Bryant, but it was one of the co-applicants of PUD 1750, which 1750 allows for industrial commercials, things of, that are different from, from what we're doing here.
Understood. Okay. So, that, so, everybody commission-wise is clear on what we, what we were doing there, the applicant is proposing. Okay. All right. Other commissioners have comments or things they want to address or questions they need answered from the applicant or from Mr. Work?
Mr. Chairman, before we get away from that issue with respect to the TE, could we address, could I address that? Before we get to, I'm sorry, Kelly Work again for the respondents. Before, before we get too far away from the issue that, the question that Commissioner La Forge raised about the notice and then the question that Mr. Commissioner Privet raised about the TE, I just would like to address those if I could.
Feel free.
First of all, with respect to the, the notice, the, the point that I was making there was that there is an error in the notice that was sent out. And this is a copy, this is the notice actually for the city council hearing in April. I don't have a copy of the planning commission notice of the meeting in February. But it does state, the property is requested to be rezoned from R1 to PUD 1750. And then it gives, says, brief description of the proposed zoning district. The site will be developed in accordance with the regulation of the modified C3 community commercial district. Well, that is just wrong with respect to track three, okay? So, there wasn't any other description that was provided other than that of the proposed PUD for this 80-acre, five-track development. So, I, I would just suggest, you all do have some input with respect to the content of the notice that goes out, and it just seems as though there could be some improvement and it just seems as though there could be some improvement with regard to that for people.
I'll accept that, I mean, I'll accept that. Yeah. I, we agree that there's room for improvement on some aspects of the, what is not the statutory component of the notice that we could address. It, I'm still, I mean, I'm still pretty persuaded by the notices, you know, general context, the size of the development, the tracks, and then the fact that the proposed uses are spelled out. An applicant, as you know, can say, "Well, we're going to rezone this, this property for duplexes, but we want the C3 setbacks to apply." You could do that. It's a standalone ordinance, right? That's what a PUD is. So, I mean, I understand the concern, again, generally about the notice requirement, but I don't want to get into trying to litigate for us the nuances of what could or could not have been more clear on the notice because that isn't something this body has any jurisdiction or perjury on.
I understand, but Mr. Box was making a point about the absence of people appearing at the planning commission.
Yep.
And there may be a reason for that. They didn't have enough information.
Understood.
All right. The other issue that I wanted to respond to is the issue about the TE. When this matter was recommended by the planning commission, the rezoning to PUD 1750, there was this TE 2H that was included. And then that was agreed to by the applicant. It went on to the city council. It was included then on the council memo. Here's a copy of the council memo.
I have it in my hand.
And the city council approved it. It included this language. "Specify techniques in the master design statement that will be used to preserve South Post Road capacity, which could include providing a center turn lane and/or decel lanes with all-new, all-new driveways on South Post Road as approved by the public works department."
One, one clarifying point on that, yep?
That is not, was not included anywhere in the PUD.
Could, Ms. Randall, would you mind addressing that, just in terms of, well, so let's, let's say for a minute that that, that what Mr. Work is saying is accurate, I believe that it is, that TE 2, which was item H on that particular application, wasn't included in the final drafting of the ordinance itself, but it was a part of what was approved by city council. What would happen in that event? Would that be applicable to the applicant?
Well, my opinion would be that the ordinance is valid because it was passed by council with these particular TE. So if it wasn't included, it would just be an error that we would need to go and correct and include it in the master design statement.
In other words, I'm, I'm taking what she says, that we believe we would be, that there, it's incumbent upon the applicant to adhere to that requirement because it was a part of the adopted ordinance. So, and we're told that in our staff report, that the, that the preliminary plat conforms to the PUD, which that would be required for conformance. So the way I understand it, they have to conform to that.
And we will.
I heard something different from, well, Ms. Randall, and maybe she can clarify.
Please, yeah.
When, when someone that is proposing to build a building on this property and they make application for a building permit, what will be reviewed is the PUD document, the master design statement and the exhibits that go with it. They're not going to be looking at the city council memo. And so, whatever the TEs are, if they're not reflected in the design statement, they're not going to be enforced. So if you want, if you, as the commission, are requiring that certain technical evaluations be made a part of the PUD, that's what you did here. You recommended them. It went on to the city council. The city council approved it with your recommendations. That was not incorporated into the design statement. If it's not, and of course, that was a concern about what was going to happen with Post Road, as you've heard here today. Right now, there's no requirement in the PUD for anything with regard to Post Road, and that's our concern.
So it is worth noting, we actually have excel and decel lanes shown on our plat. So presumably, if it gets approved by Public Works, we can go in and modify. And of course, to Ms. Randall's point, if staff believes that there was a shortcoming, they have their authority to go modify the MDS on their own. So we agree to this. And if staff believes that it should have said that, but I would just point your, maybe this is a cautionary tale for technical evaluations. What is, what is this even telling us we have to do?
I understand, and I agree with you, and that's the point I was going to make. At the end of the day, it really requires nothing. It requires what Public Works approved as it relates to anything that may be necessary, and it would be within their jurisdiction to make that determination. I don't have a problem, and I don't think the applicant is saying they would be opposed to this to including that as a technical evaluation here in the exact same language and format, which I'm happy to ask the applicant to adhere to because what I'm being told from municipal council's office is that they need to correct that error to include that comment in the MDS because it was approved by city council that way. So.
We can agree to it right here.
So we would just be adopting that language, this is just to clarify, which would then be essentially TE 10?
Sure.
And there, well, actually be 11 because TE 10 would be the agreement to provide a 25-foot buffer from the west property line, including the common area, through the first nine lots going east along the south side of track three.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, in that regard, there was another change that was made by the applicant to the master design statement to TE 2G that deviated from what was recommended and what was approved by the city council. And so that is also an issue that we've raised in our letter to you. And that was 2G, which dealt with the issue of the paving the service road.
And I think you indicated that the service road is being improved?
Right now, plans are being drawn up to be submitted to Public Works. The, the language was added because that, of course, is how development works. Now, I'm not here on behalf, I don't, I don't represent the owner of track four and five, and it's not relevant to this particular discussion. But, as I said, Mr. Grubbs happens to represent that individual and can, can tell you that he is actively drafting the plans to submit to Public Works in short order to get those plans approved to pave the service road.
What sort of commitment could we get to today to ensure that that is adhered to as outlined by that TE?
Well, I, I think you already have it. I mean, if you read the TE, we actually provide some trigger that the TE didn't. So the TE says, "Pave the I-40 service road along the entire southern boundary of tracks four and five to city standards." Perhaps I could have argued that it doesn't give us a time. We're going to wait until, you know, the year 2300, and then we're going to adhere to this TE. At least we provide a specific trigger in more specificity in the actual MDS that required it at the time of development of track four and five. So we actually put a trigger on it that didn't exist at the time of the planning commission or city council.
There is a trigger, excuse me, there is a trigger on it, and it would be with respect to any other requirement in the PUD, and that is when someone comes in and makes application for a building permit. It would be, it would be required to be done. Our point is that improvement of that service road needs to be done in connection with development of track three. Right now, it's, it's a gravel road. It is used regularly. It's going to be used more with the development of this area, including the development of track three. The improvement of that service road needs to be done in connection with the development of track three, not to wait until track four and track five, which is the addition that the applicant made to the design statement.
But, but your position, Mr. Work, is that that TE was also included and recommended to city council and adopted as a part of the final ordinance, but was not included in the, in the draft?
No, no. It was included. They, what the, was added by the applicant in the document they submitted after the planning commission, they added this qualifier that said, "At the time of development of either track four or five," which means that we're waiting until however, whatever time track four, track five is developed, as opposed to it being a requirement when track three is developed, which is what we believe is necessary.
I think the irony is, it's actually going to come before the development of track three because we can't turn dirt with a preliminary plat, right? And so it would be a final plat, and what Mr. Grubbs is telling me is that his submittal of plans is going to way predate the submittal of building permit plans for track three.
Then they shouldn't have a problem with going back with the original TE language.
I guess we could take out "at the time of development" and then allow me to argue that there is no trigger.
Understood.
I'm afraid I think-
Here's what, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, it seems to, the fact that it's adjacent to four and five is not what's compelling. It is to support track three, so it needs to be, to support track three. It needs to be paved, just like the pud said.
It's not anywhere close to track three.
Doesn't need to be. It's going to support track three. It's going to support everything in there. It doesn't have to be adjacent to it.
Well, actually, we'll have access. The TE doesn't say that. The TE just says, "Pave the I-40 service road." It doesn't say anything about track three.
I'm, I'm, I want to be clear about something. We can't-
We're litigating the-
I was about to say, I want to be clear. We're not going to relitigate the PUD. If there are elements, to your points, Mr. Work, where things were left out that were agreed to and adopted but were not written into the final MDS, those are things that I certainly want to get the developer to commit to. But what I, what I want to be careful about is, I don't want to go back. We're not, we can't go back and amend anything that was in a, an approved TE that was approved by city council. So if that's the ordinance, the way that it was approved, we, I'm not going to, I'm not willing to impose some requirement that they do it here because the idea at the time was that there was a trigger for that. And at the time it was adopted, whether we made a mistake or not, you all can be the arbiters of that, which is fine. But it was four or five, and that was what was written into the ordinance.
I don't think it's four and five. The four and five is only referencing where it is. It's not saying a moment in time of four and five. It's saying where the road is, and it is where it is adjacent to four and five.
Okay.
So then perhaps-
The changed language changed the timing, and that's, that's our objection. It changed the timing to be only when four or five are developed.
I see what you're saying.
So maybe staff can go amend the PUD and take out "at the time of development."
I'd have to have comment from you at this point on what?
I, we're fine with that.
What, Ms. Nave, please.
Take out "at the time of development." Again, that's not before you on this plat.
It certainly-
But we're fine if staff wants to amend the PUD on their own accord and take out the qualifying language at the time of development. The thought was, at the time, it at least provided a specific trigger and date and time in which that would happen because as drafted, it doesn't actually provide anything.
I'm missing it. What's the problem, what's the problem with it being at the time of development? At the time of the development of track three?
Because at the time of development, that's not what the TE says.
Yeah, it does.
No, it says, no. It doesn't reference track three.
Right. It doesn't reference one, two, three, four, or five.
It does reference track four.
It's only referencing where the location is. It is adjacent to four and five.
Because track three, it would be considered an off-site improvement that the city couldn't require. So we can go take off that qualifying language in the PUD.
That is what was-
But, and then if, if the, the permit requirements require us to do that with track three, then I guess so. But I don't think that's what the code says.
One, one second. Let me, let me just provide this clarification because it's getting into who's on first and what's on second discussion. So let me, let me try to clarify this. So this is the city council memorandum regarding the adoption of this, and this is the language as it was presented here. It says, "2G, pave the I-40 service road along the entire southern boundary of tracks four and five to city standards." That was all that it said, and that was how it was adopted. According to municipal council's office, this is the way it was written into the PUD as finally prepared. "The developer shall be required to pave the I-40 service road along the entire southern boundary of tracks four and five to Oklahoma City paving standards at the time of development of either track four or five." That's what was finally written in. So to Mr. Work's point, that was what was added in your, in your opinion, right? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I need you to confirm for me one way or the other that "at time of development of either track four or five" was the issue.
That was what was added, and that was not what was recommended for approval by the planning commission, and it was not what was approved by the city council. So that's our point. That was added by the applicant.
But I want to be careful that we understand what we're, what we're going to wind up with if, if we push the issue here. The reason he's so eager to agree to that language change is because this, the way that is drafted, provides certainty as to exactly when it must be done. The language as it was approved at council, if we're going to call it another drafting error, doesn't provide that trigger. It just says, "Pave it." It doesn't say when. And so it could be when track one is developed. It could be, so I, I want to-
I, I understand your point, but I would respectfully disagree. I think it would be required to be done when the first building permit is applied for.
It doesn't, it doesn't say that. So we're arguing over something that ultimately have to be litigated in court, which we're not going to do today. We're, we're getting really close to that anyway.
Or litigated by the commission.
Yeah.
Which is our decision right now, which we're here to do. So I, I think, as, I think we understand the issue at this point.
What I can tell you is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, David.
The subdivision regulations would state that it would be required when the adjacent track is developed, which is why my recollection was, staff wanted that qualifying language in. To the chairman's point, I'm very eager to remove that qualifier because I think it provides my other client, who owns track four and five, way more flexibility. Track three, under the subregs, would not trigger the I-40 service road to be paved. The language we added is more restrictive than the original TE that was drafted.
I respectfully disagree.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think we've heard from the attorneys about this issue sufficiently. I think the commission should be allowed to make up its own mind on this issue.
I agree. I agree. I want to make sure, because Commissioner La Forge asked some really good questions, and part and parceling this out, the only reason it's important is because if there are errors, we're, we are operating under the assumption that the, that this plat conforms with the underlying PUD. And there's discussion, a lot of discussion, and rightfully so, about whether or not what was adopted as the final ordinance is actually what got memorialized. And I want to make sure we know that because when we vote on it, we're saying we agree. And it's a final action that we agree that it adheres to the PUD. So that's why I wanted to spend some time and make sure we got it right. If everybody's crystal clear, let's move on. If, does anybody have any other questions on this point, or do you feel? Okay, so.
Could I just offer one other option that you could consider, the commission could consider, and that would be to impose a condition on the approval of a preliminary plat that would address that issue?
That was never contemplated in the PUD.
I, I, again, I'm very hesitant to do anything that would impose upon the applicant something that's not required by the ordinance. That's not what we're here to do. We don't, we don't finally approve ordinances. We, we're a recommending body. We, we made a recommendation, and it was ultimately adopted.
I'm not suggesting you add something in addition to what the PUD requires. I'm just suggesting if there is some question, as Mr. Box is suggesting there would be with the city council's language, that you just include a condition in the approval of, of a preliminary plat, if that's ultimately what is, what is done, that addresses that issue.
Got it. Okay.
That the development would not be able to proceed until the I-40 service road is paved on the southern boundary of tracks four and five.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Work. Commissioner Hinkle.
I may be way off here. Did I understand correctly that this 38 acres was already zoned R1?
Yes, sir.
So you could come put 6,000-square-foot lots in there without coming in front of us at all?
Yes, sir.
Other questions of the commissioners?
It'd have to have a preliminary plat.
We'd have to plat it.
Right.
But yes, it was, we didn't go from AA to something much more denser.
How, how long has the property been zoned R1? I'm not taking any comments from the audience right now. I'm so sorry. I just don't want you to sit there and hold your hand for five minutes and wonder why I'm not calling on you. How many lots were, or how, how long had the property been zoned R1 before?
I don't know.
You don't, you don't know?
No, sir.
Okay.
Probably a long time, but I don't know.
Okay. Other commissioners have things they want to talk about or information they need from the applicant or from protestants, Mr. Work, who represents protestants?
Yeah.
Go ahead, please.
I'd love to hear from Kelly. Besides the issue, I've heard enough about paving. I would not like to hear about the issue anymore. I completely understand, I assure you. I would love to hear, what, what do we need to do? How do we, how do we bridge the gap here? Clearly, I mean, I represent Ward 7. We are just, we have properties that are very similar to the neighbors here. So I'm very sensitive to the fact that they're concerned about the density here. Where, what is your proposed solution to how we move forward?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Pennington. And in response, what I would say is the, what you heard over and over from the residents of the area is the concern about the infrastructure being inadequate, particularly the streets. And so that is certainly within the commissioner, commission's power to, to condition approval of a subdivision plat on having the necessary improvements completed with respect to the streets. One of your principal requirements under the, your subdivision regulations, it says, "Land," section 1.2.3 of the subdivision regulations. "Land shall not be subdivided until adequate public facilities and improvements exist and proper provisions have been made for necessary road improvements, storm drainage, water, sewage, capital improvements, and other improvements." So that specifically references storm improvements, I mean, excuse me, street improvements. Section 1.3.1.1 of the subdivision regulations, that's talking about the purposes of the regulations. "To ensure that public facilities are available and will have sufficient capacity to serve the proposed subdivision." So specifically with respect to the condition of post-road, which you've heard much about, that currently only has 22 feet of paving. If you're going to do a development at this level of density, well, it ought to be conditioned on, at a minimum, the improvement of post-road to meet the minor arterial standard of 48 feet of paving with curb and gutter. That's the minimum standard under Oklahoma City subdivision regulations. We referenced briefly the, of course, the problem, see, that exists now, today, because of post-road being as inadequate as it is, is there's a lot of cut-through traffic that uses that I-40 service road and goes up through the neighborhood on Noma Road that has less than 17 feet of paving. So that is only going to get worse. And so we've got inadequate streets on the east side. We have the minor arterial post-road that is severely inadequate. And now we have urban density development that is proposing to be done. And our suggestion is, is that you condition that approval on making sure that these public improvements to the streets are done.
May I respond? If you look at your staff report, on page two, it has review comments. And it notes that an asterisk indicates that an agency, department, and/or division responded with no adverse comments. If you turn to page five, you will see that your traffic management division in this Oklahoma City, public works department responded with an asterisk, meaning they didn't fail to respond. They did respond with no adverse comments. So I think what, what's going to happen, one, is the bond issue has been approved to resurf-
to resurface it. What is undoubtedly going to happen, and Councilman Stone referenced this in the night meeting, with Douglas being closed, it's likely that some of those funds get shifted over to Post to handle whatever increased traffic may occur. But I think it's important that we highlight, we're not, this is not a big jump in density. This was R1 before 1750. 1750 actually increased the density significantly to allow up to quadplexes on the entirety of this, but we're coming in with only R1 and a few duplex lots. So, we aren't seeking that giant jump in density that was approved unanimously by the PUD. We're incrementally increasing with some duplex lots. Now, we have to do all the improvements that Public Works will require of us as it relates to our side of the street. We don't own control or have easements necessary to do anything else. You can't condition something on some date in the future that we don't even know if it'll exist.
So, Kelly, am I accurate, and am I understanding then, is the, as long as we, if we address the infrastructure issues with streets, then that is satisfactory?
Well, I think that is a minimum. You know, I mean, we certainly heard the other concerns that have been expressed by the residents, not all of whom I represent by far.
Of course.
So, people have their own views.
Yeah. No, we understand that, but I'm asking collectively, so if we were to make some changes, I mean, because we've had discussions about amenities and fire response times. We've talked a lot about paving the streets, but I'm wondering if there is some point of compromise at all with the plat as it is. And if I sound like, if I'm hearing you correctly, it sounds like as long as we address the infrastructure issues and the litany of these other issues, which I think we are going to throughout this discussion, I just want to be clear that you're not proposing anything additional besides what we've already discussed.
When you say that we've already discussed, referring to the issues that have been raised that the chairman has been dutifully recording today?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Does that help you?
Yes, at least for the moment.
Okay.
Just to add to that, Mr. Pennington, we have expressed to Mr. Box as the representative for the applicant that we are certainly willing to visit with them. We proposed that, in fact, to visit further with them about to try to find common ground and to narrow our differences. It was their choice to proceed today.
My understanding was there was a community meeting, was there not?
Yes, we had a community meeting.
We had a meeting, yes.
We continued this from January 13th to have a community meeting. Myself, my client, my engineer showed up to the community meeting. Councilman Todd Stone was at the meeting. The meeting was unlike any I've ever attended. The protesters put on a 40-minute presentation. At the end of the 40 minutes, they allowed us to speak, and in the process of answering questions at 7:00 sharp, they asked us to leave. I approached Mr. Work and said, "I'm assembled here with my client, my engineer. If your folks have questions, now is the time to answer those questions." And we were advised, they were done with us. And I said, "If you show up to Planning Commission and cry foul that you haven't asked, haven't got your questions answered, I'm going to not agree to another continuance. We've assembled ourselves at night to answer all the questions, and you're escorting us out." We left. And so, the idea that we're now, we didn't get all the questions answered was exactly what I worried about two weeks ago, when we all were in that room.
But the point is, there was a neighborhood meeting.
With that, with all due respect, I mean, that is a completely unfair and inaccurate characterization of what took place at that meeting.
The people on this commission are very aware that he's characterizing it from his perspective, but I think the question is, was there a neighborhood meeting?
Since that time, I proposed to Mr. Box that we continue our discussions, that we have further dialogue. They chose not to do that. So, that is a complete mischaracterization of the communication that transpired. We had a large group assembled. Yes, we did need to devote some time to coordinating the group after we heard from the applicant, and that's what was done. At the beginning of the meeting, it was said that it was going to last for an hour, so...
Understood. I get it. I mean, there was a meeting, and it didn't go the way everybody hoped it would go.
Their feelings were hurt, you know. It's news to us.
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioner Pennington?
No, that's it for now.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay. Commissioner Privet, I'm going to let you take a start. If you have some summary comments, and we can sort of address some of the stuff as we go, and I'm happy to refresh recollection if you need a list of topics or if you have comments of your own.
I remember sidewalks and connectability, walkability were a concern. I've read that you're going to pave sidewalks across creeks, across...
Yes, sir.
In the long post.
We seek no variances to any sidewalk requirements.
So, post-road will be sidewalked, and then all the way through the neighborhood will be sidewalked?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I don't have much more. I don't, I mean, I don't think we're going to get everybody happy here today. I mean, that's not going to happen, so...
If I can say, then kind of wrap up with some higher-level comments after all this I'd like to make. So, a lot of this, you know, I've asked about, I was concerned about the notice, concerned about the PUD two years ago when you all weren't here. So, I don't know how much you guys watch our other meetings, but we always concern ourselves about what if, you know, let's try to get this right for the future. I think the notice was sufficient as I got the clarification of what it said it was going to be. I think it's very important that it was R1 before. I, sorry, I did have one question, just real quick. How many units would have been allowed before that PUD in 2020? It would have been more than you're proposing in this plat?
Yeah, you could have, I mean, as R1, you could have done four-something units an acre, and we're at 4.9. It's not...
Okay, so, a few more. Okay, so...
Well, they would have been required to be a minimum 6,000 square foot lots. These are 5,000, and then 130-some duplex.
Got it. Okay, so at the time it was residential, it would have been larger houses, maybe less. But when you all weren't here with what I think was a sufficient notice that went out, we, I don't recall it specifically, but we would have concerned ourselves with, was this appropriate to change the things that could change? And we negotiated, I guess, for buffers. We concerned ourselves with the street improvements. We thought that Post Oak would be improved, and we put things in here to make that happen. Whether the water would be ready to extend, we went through all these things and did our best, and I don't regret it. I think that what was allowed before and what we changed two years ago was some tweaks, but it was very similar to what you could have faced at the time with the zoning at that time. So, I don't want this to be, oh, man, you missed your chance then. Yes, we, and so, all the comments you're making now, the best we can, more buffers and all of this, we're going to continue and improve it to the extent we can. I think the issue is, which our chairman usually describes even more than I can, now we're at the preliminary plat stage. I don't think we missed the boat before. Now, we can only do so much at the preliminary plat stage. Please remind me, but if it appears to comply with the subdivision regulations...
And we agree that it conforms, then?
Then we cannot deny it. We can ask so that there's not later disputes and somebody that wants to litigate it and waste more money on lawyers. We're going to do our best to the extent we can, but we, so the applicant's offering to make all these changes he can. So, I think the notice was sufficient. I think what we did two years ago made sense. And so, at this point, again, not everybody's going to be happy. Folks that have acreage and live out in the country don't want neighborhoods next to them, but it happens. And what could have been there before was a whole bunch of houses. I don't know when it was zoned R1, but it was a long time ago, I bet, as well. And so, we do our best, but in the end, houses could be built there, and noise, and animals, and safety, and all this thing happens. So, I hate that not everybody can be happy, but I just want to clarify my other comments on notice and whether something was mistaken in the past. It seems like we had done our best, and I don't think we regret it, or at least I don't.
Well, I'll add some color to that if I can. I mean, I received a number of emails about this. We knew there was a number of protest letters, and so, I took the time to go back and watch the hearing from February 13th of 2020. I watched the whole thing again in its entirety. It's 90 minutes of discussion between the Comp Plan Amendment, which came before the zoning, and then the zoning request itself. And there's some things here that I just are really important. First of all, it was alluded to earlier, the staff recommended approval of the Comp Plan, and something that I have never seen them do in any other instance, and if you guys can recall, want to tell me, but Comp Plan Amendments are usually recommended for denial. Not only do they recommend approval, but they asked us to expand this from 83 acres to 400 acres in our adoption, which we did. So, when we approved the Comp Plan Amendment, we moved 400 acres into urban low, and the reason we did that is because staff presented us with information that city water and city sewer was being brought to this area. The other thing was, that I think was really compelling for me as I rewatched the hearing and think about it again, is that this is kind of, it is, it's Ward Four, which we all know by design is fairly rural, just generally speaking, but this is as close to suburban as I think I'd seen a case in Ward Four. And so, there was a lot of discussion, too, about automatic aid agreements, the fact that they didn't exist, that there was conversation going on. There was discussion about it being rural fire service, but not out of rural fire service. There was no request for fire suppressions made at the Comp Plan discussion or in the zoning application. Mike Wilson actually was present at the hearing and said on the record, "Beyond rural is when that's requested," which is why it's not requested here. We had one resident who was present. I'm not going to say his name out of respect for that, but I'm just, I'm not telling you, I'm telling you who was here. There was one guy here. So, I understand that there was one guy here. I understand, he represented to us that he lived across the street and had for 20 years. There was no one else here to corroborate that, so, I mean, right, wrong, or indifferent, I took that as fact. And we discussed the trees with him. That discussion was, is on the record. You can view it. And so, the Comp Plan Amendment, everyone was present. There were nine people here. It was approved unanimously. The proximity to expanding tinker, that was a discussion that we had in between the zoning hearing and the Comp Plan Amendment. And then, when we get to the zoning, there's no one here, nobody here in protest, and yet, I will tell you, there were a number of members in this commission, my colleagues, that argued vehemently for certain controls and restrictions on density that, you know, limited the amount of the dense units that could be there. We made them separated across multiple tracks. We negotiated on a handful of things, including, you know, we had a discussion on trees. In fact, the one commission member who voted against it did so because he couldn't get a commitment from the developer on a specific amount of tree preservation. It was recommended for approval A to 1 regardless. So, I will echo what Commissioner Ford said. We had a very thoughtful, engaged discussion. It is incredibly disheartening to everyone here. I don't like to speak for other people, but it is for me, and I know they feel the same way, that we didn't have information at the zoning phase, stage, that we could have used to negotiate more changes. I think the buffer that you've agreed to provide for those lots, I have particular sympathy for Mr. Knave, and was it Mr. Smalley was also the other resident nearby? But that's J., not Justin. No, Justin, not J. It's getting confusing. But that's very, like, that's hard. That's tough. So, the boundaries are there. I understand that yours is zoned R1, too, and you kind of know what's coming to the south there that's been zoned. But overall, there was a thoughtful discussion. There are things in our staff reports every time about upland forest, about lack of transition, about, you know, the wildlife, if that's prevalent there, about water issues. We constantly talk about flooding and issues with roads, traffic, and so forth. What's really compelling to me as a planning commissioner that I'm going to make people mad about, which is fine, is we have to balance things that are very difficult. On the one hand, I hear you. I'm concerned about some of the things. I'm a little concerned about some of the infrastructure challenges that we have. I'm also a little bit encouraged that what happened to Douglas, even though it's going to increase your traffic, is going to bring resources to your door more quickly than they would have otherwise. And with expanding tinker, housing is a big problem. Affordable housing is a big problem. Diversity of housing is a big problem. We have a major housing problem in Oklahoma City, a major housing problem. We had 6,800 permits pulled in 2020, and more than 10,000 residents moved here. It's not hard to see that we've got a shortage in supply. And so, when we look at these things, this is something that's sensitive to me. I live in Ward Eight. I have two-lane roads all over Ward Eight that are, it looks like something, you know, I'm not going to use that term today, but it looks like it got bombed. I mean, it's terrible. Like, it's, they're obliterated out there. We deal with the same thing. I have to constantly approve things because at the end of the day, we need the housing stock for our city to continue to grow, for our tax base to grow. So, while I am truly empathetic, I am supportive of the plat because I'm told that it conforms to our subdivision regulations and to the underlying zoning, and I'm compelled by the agreements that the applicant has made. I don't know what more I could do, and if I went back and watched that and I felt like we hadn't been thoughtful, or we, you know, we hadn't had a discussion, it'd be a lot harder for me. But we did have that discussion. Unfortunately, we did not have more input. The notice went out. We're told that it's legal. I don't, I can't do anything with that except accept it at face value. So, I don't know where other commissioners are on this, but I'll just speak up and say, I'm in favor of approving the preliminary plat for all those reasons. If there's anybody that's not, I'd love to hear the rationale just so we can have that discussion as a commission, but that's where I'm at.
I think that it would be nice for there to still be more discussions between the preliminary plat phase and the final plat phase. I think that would be encouraging if there is something that can be done, just like the issue with the green belt to the south, where we were able to get something done quickly that was amenable to both sides. I think that that would be beneficial, and I'd ask that both sides at least make that effort between now and the final plat stage. But I think that the chairman is right, and I'll be voting for it as well.
The one other thing I'll say just quickly, if my microphone will turn back on. There we go. One of the things that's a common concern, but not a reality, is by us approving this plat, there's not going to be, you know, however many units built next year. That's just not how it works. I'm supportive of this, but I also feel very compelled to follow up on two points. I feel compelled to follow up on what the status is of post-road improvements, which I will do with the city staff and your councilperson, and then also discussions on the notice requirement, because I'm very disheartened that I have a roomful of people for a plat that I didn't have for a zoning. And oddly, the plat notice is more restrictive in terms of what its requirements are at 100 feet than the original, which was 300 feet. So, I'm going to, I want to follow up on that, and I think that we can do some things different for citizens that we should talk about as a commission. And again, we don't, unfortunately, we can't pass ordinances, but we can certainly voice our concern that they need to be discussed at appropriate levels. So, anything else from anybody, or we... Where are you at?
I've got the TEs, ready to amend them.
Well, I guess just for clarification purposes, the, and I want to make sure everyone, but particularly Mr. Work representing clients, Mr. Box, the two TEs that I had added, the request from the applicant was to strike TE2.
Yes.
And then, we've added TE10 and 11. TE10 was that the lots along the southern boundary from the west corner, starting with the common area and the nine lots to the east of the common area, shall require a 25-foot landscape buffer. Is that...
Yes. What I would suggest is, let's just mirror the buffer language that exists on the north and the east in terms of...
Within the PUD, that we required at that stage.
25 feet, healthy, mature trees shall remain for the common area and the first nine lots on the southern portion of the plat moving from Post to the east.
Okay. That's good enough for me on the record to memorialize the intention.
And that's 10?
That would be TE10. TE11 would be the incorporation from the MDS of TE2H, the language inserted, and I'll just read that out of an abundance of caution for the record. So, TE11 would be, "Specified techniques in the master design statement that will be used to preserve South Post Road capacity, which could include providing a center turn lane and/or decal lanes with all new driveways on South Post Road as approved by the Public Works Department." I'm reading that straight from your brief, Mr. Work. Are you in agreement with that language?
Well, I mean, I guess yes, with the caveat that, of course, all that that really means is what already exists.
I understand.
Public Works says what we have to do.
I understand. The intent was to incorporate that language into the PUD. You acknowledged that on the record. All we're doing is memorializing what existed in the PUD as a component of the plat to ensure that that's a requirement.
Sure. Yes.
Okay. I understand. I understand.
And then we also...
What we understand and what you understand, I want to make sure everybody understands what's happening, which is that we're agreeing to incorporate that, so...
And then, we need the word easement on TE3 to be removed. So, we agree that we can't block. We just need the word easement to remove, because some of the trees that exist are actually within that easement. actually within that easement.
The private roadway located in the northeast subdivision. You're just deleting TE, that, that word easement within TE 3.
Correct. Keep the TE, but delete the word easement.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can we get some clarification on that?
Of course, absolutely.
Issue of the TE number 2G that was part of the PUD, which we had the discussion about, about the I-40 service road. I just want to make sure we're clear about where we came down on that.
We're, we're so clear as mud. We're clear that the language that was adopted essentially does what you were asking. There is not a specified requirement within that language to, that the developer would be required to do it at this track stage. Certainly, the way it's adopted, they, they must do it the way it was adopted, in accordance with track four or five. That's, that's the way it's drafted, but there's no requirement for that to be done today. No.
Well, what I understood Mr. Box to indicate was that he was agreeable to have that language be, be reflected as it was stated in the TE and approved by the planning commission and city council. In our opinion, that's, that's what should be approved. That's what was approved by the planning commission and council.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think we can require that. And I don't think we can require within a plat to amend that language.
You weren't amending it. That's what existed.
Not within the plat. I'm happy for the city attorney's office and development services to go modify the PUD.
We can add that TE to a plat.
No, it was in there.
To, to require what the, the TE says. I'm not sure why he wants that.
That should be done. That is what the master design statement, that was what was approved by the planning commission and city council.
Understood. Then, what municipal council's office is saying is that they can correct that language as well.
Okay.
So, that, yeah. But that's not for us to include within an item here, so.
Okay. So, just so the record's clear.
The record is clear that we have been told by-
The master design statement language will be revised to reflect the language of TE 2G as recommended by planning commission and approved by city council.
That's what I was just told from municipal council's office.
That's what, that's what we would request.
And Privet's questions, please be answered about that.
Are you good?
Yeah.
Your question about what happens to the road, because the developer told me that he is literally stopping it at track four, and it's supposed to be city standards.
And it'll just stop and go to gravel from there?
Whatever public works requires us to do, we will meet all city standards.
Can we put that in there? It says city standards, but-
Ms. Newey, Ms. Newey, because you're not at the microphone, you're on the record. I understand what you're asking us to do. I'm, I'm not in favor of requiring those comments. The public, with the language we just read into the record says that public works is going to review and provide them what needs to be done. We just adopted that as TE 11. So, are you, are you comfortable with?
I, I know why they're not comfortable. They don't want people, you know, using that road and going through to, uh, Noma Road. But, you know, we can't, it's a public road. We can't just say, no, you can't go down there, but.
We've had that discussion many times.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that would be, so, deleting TE 2, delete the word easement from TE 3, and then the addition of TE 10 and 11 as agreed and read into the record. That's where you are. Do you want to make a motion, or?
Yeah. I'll move approval of CE 7391, striking TE 2, and striking the word easement in TE 3. All other TEs adopted 4 through 9, and add TE 10 to state that there should be, required a 25-foot buffer on the south, landscape buffer on the south of nine lots to the east.
Mirroring the language from PUD 1750.
Right. And TE 11 would be just to add TE 2H back into the-
The incorporated language, which I read into the record.
Right.
Yep. Okay. Anything else? Is that your motion?
That's it.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the preliminary plat for CE 7391, subject to the amended technical evaluations as read into the record by Commissioner Privet. It's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes when available. All votes should be cast, and that item is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much, and thank you for everybody for being here today. We appreciate you coming down. Next item on our agenda today is item 13. Before we get, before we do that, I, I know I'm going to lose a commissioner at 4:30, and I've got another commissioner who's got to recuse. Is there any problem, Ms. Randall, with me moving up what would be items 21 and 22, so we don't lose the ability for a quorum to hear those items today?
No.
Okay. Any, any commissioner object to that?
Nope.
Okay. So, Commissioner Hinkle, I think you said you were going to recuse. We're going to hear item 21, I believe, which is your item, and item 22.
Okay. Item 21 is case SPUD-
Sorry, man.
1381. It's an application to rezone 10800 Northwestern Avenue from the C3 Community Commercial District, SPUD 1381.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an SPUD that would take the site at Hepburn and Western from C3 to an SPUD. The SPUD would actually reduce down the total number of uses that would be allowed, but added the ability to keep the existing sign that's there when the site further develops. And, you know, I, I guess, in the words of our chairman, who's constantly talking about increasing sales tax and money for schools, we believe that having the sign remain and having a commercial development does nothing but provide additional opportunities to generate sales tax, generate an, an additional ad valorem base that goes to fund schools. And again, I think on balance, we're actually taking uses away that would otherwise be permitted today. It is worth noting, we are surrounded on all four sides by straight C3. So, yes, there will be a sign, but it will be the less, least intensively zoned tract on that intersection. So, with that, we ask for your approval.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Pennington. This is your word, sir. Do you have questions or comments for the applicant?
I do not. I visited with him about it, and maybe my question just generally is, can I get a quick update on the sign code? Does that matter? I don't know. We've been here a while already.
Yep. Jeff, you want to provide that?
Sure. Yeah. The sign code is going through the adoption process. It would retain the language that the current code has, which, you know, would, in, in this case, you know, require a sign or a billboard to go away once the project is developed. It would actually increase the minimum lot size from 5,000, I believe, five or 6,000, I think it's 5,000 right now, to 12,000. That was something that was agreed upon by sign, sign industry stakeholders. But yes, that is going through the adoption process. It has been already, as was noted, I think, last time, to the Development Review Committee, and it will be coming to the planning commission, I believe it's the, in the, the March 24th. So, it's coming soon. We're almost through getting through all the other boards and commissions.
Okay. I think that's all, that's my only question.
Okay. My, my only request of the applicant, which I'm, you know, I have like emotional scarring over that case from your word, was to, you know, exclude 8,300.69. Are you in agreement with that, Mr. Box? Spectator, sports, and entertainment restricted?
Yes.
That's, I mean, that's, that is my only concern here. Other commissioners have thoughts or comments on it? Okay. Is there anybody who wants to be heard on SPUD 1381? Okay. Commissioner Pennington, if there's no further discussion, I think we can take a motion from you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of SPUD 1381 with the removal of, and now I have lost the use unit.
8,300.69.
8,300.69.
Burning in my brain for eternity. Wakeboarding parks, bad.
Yeah. That's the motion.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to city council on SPUD 1381. It has been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes when available. All votes should be cast, and that item is approved by five votes.
Thank you.
Next item is item 22. Mr. Butler?
This is SPUD 1382, application to rezone 1612 South Check Hall Road from C3 to SPUD 1382.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an identical application, just different part of the city. Again, it's commercial surrounding us. We can agree to the same restriction to remove 8,300.69 in this. I did talk to Commissioner Coffey. I know she's not here. We talked about this yesterday. She did not indicate any concerns. She actually went and drove the site. So, again, we can agree to the same deletion of 8,300.69.
Okay. Is there anybody here that wants to be heard on 1382? Okay. If none, in Commissioner Coffey's absence, I don't have anything other than that. Do any commissioners have any concerns on this one? I, I would just point out, too, that similar to the last item, this, this particular item is surrounded by C3 on three sides and a giant VOTEC center to the west. So, I don't have any objection. If there's no discussion from commissioners, I'll take a motion on it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of SPUD 1382 with the removal of use unit 8,300.69.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to city council on SPUD 1382. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And that item is recommended for approval with the deletion of 8,300.69. Thank you.
Mr. Zizao asked to be put at the heel of the docket.
Based on the look on his face after I moved your items up, I'm just going to go ahead and do that, just to see what kind of look I get after that. I appreciate your flexibility there, Mr. Zizao. The next item, I guess, is yours, which would be item 13. I just didn't want to lose a quorum, which we're dangerously close to doing. So, welcome back, Mr. Hinkle. Mr. Butler, start us off with 13.
This is PC 10793, application to rezone 300 West Britton Road from R1 to C3.
Good afternoon. Mark Zizao with Johnson and Associates, and we are always willing to accommodate Mr. Box and his cases. This is in an application that we had filed to go to straight C3. After some conversations with staff, they felt that the neighborhood business zoning classification was a, a better fit. We do not object, so we agree with that TE, and we would ask for your approval.
I, I used to, well, I still do. I have a PO box at the post office across the street, and so, I drive by this building and I have for a long time. It's really cool to see. I hope something cool happens there. It's a concrete block building with no windows. It's painted gray. It's lovely, but it, it could be so much more. I'm ecstatic for it, to be candid with you. I hope nobody's here in opposition, because I'm a big supporter of something like this hopefully getting improved. But this is, I believe, your word, Mr. Pennington. Do you have any comments on this?
Yeah, just another staff. I'm curious, and I know we've done this before, but can I just get a quick deal about what it actually means to become the neighborhood business district? What does that actually mean?
It's, it limits uses, is essentially the purpose of it, is to eliminate some of the more noxious or intensive-
It does. It tones down the commercial uses. It limits signage. It's just a lighter commercial district than C3.
Gotcha.
No, no questions.
Okay. Is there anybody here that wants to be heard on PC 10793? Okay. Seeing none, if there's no discussion from commissioners, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of PC 10793 as amended.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to city council on PC 10793, subject to the amended zoning outlined in the application. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. And that item is recommended approval. Good luck with that project.
Thank you.
That's fun. Let's get some money for schools. Item 14 continued to 324. Item 15 is withdrawn. Item 16 continued to March the 10th, which brings us to item 17. Mr. Butler?
This is SPUD 1379, application to rezone 1801 South Jordan Avenue from R1 and I1 to SPUD 1379.
Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
My name is David Moss, 424 Northwest Sixth.
Welcome, Mr. Moss.
Thank you.
Sorry to keep you waiting, sir.
It is what it is.
What do we need to know about your application?
Basically, this was, the structure was built several years ago. We, I rezoned the corner to build this structure. Some, sometime after that, I acquired the lot right behind this corner lot, but it was, it was acquired after, so I didn't include it in the original zoning. So, now, I would like to go back and rezone that to inquire, to encompass that in the, the original zoning of that property there.
Okay. Commissioner Pennington, you're, you're back on duty.
All right. First question is about the, is it, are there actual houses that are being used behind this property?
There is only one house behind this property, all the way down to Prospect. There's only one house left.
Okay.
There, there's a structure there, but nobody's lived in it in years.
Gotcha. That's what I figured.
Yeah.
And then, our staff report was talking about whether there would be a new driveway on 17th. Do you intend to do that?
Yes. When the, when the original structure was built, if you'll, if you've been in that area, you'll know that there's a significant slope to that property, and so, to construct that building on the corner, I had to raise that property up about five foot, just to build that building on the corner. So, it's about a five-foot drop from the original structure to the lot that I'm trying to add to this. So, to come in and, originally, we discussed bringing some, not adding a, a second driveway there, but bringing it in, but it would be such a significant ramp that we wouldn't be able to get anything in up and down it, because it is, that building is raised up quite a bit.
Gotcha.
Okay. That, so, unfortunately, you know, the, the other building, if I had owned that property behind it originally, we could have reconfigured that whole lot, but it was acquired from the city. I, I acquired that lot from the city on taxes after that, so I'd already raised that property up significantly.
Cool.
I have no further questions.
Mr. Moss, you're aware of the technical evaluation provided by staff, that all outside storage shall be screened from view?
Yes.
And you're in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other commissioners have questions on this? Anybody want to be heard on SPUD 1379 that isn't named Mr. Moss? Okay. If there's no further discussion, I think we'll take a motion from you, Commissioner Pennington.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of SPUD 1379, including its technical evaluations.
Yes, sir. I have a motion to recommend approval to city council on SPUD 1379. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet, subject to the technical evaluation. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is recommended for approval. Good luck with your, the building and with your business, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 18.
This is SPUD 1383, application to rezone 4641 Northwest 63rd Street from SPUD 1240.
Good afternoon. For one last time, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. On behalf of the applicant, who's also still here with us, and Mark Zizao, who also assisted in this, you may recall, some of you were on this commission a couple of years ago when I came before you to rezone this tract to SPUD 1240. There was a lot of neighborhood discussion at the time. We went from R1 to an apartment project. The apartment project did not work out, and now, my client seeks to rezone this to allow for a personal storage complex. So, the site planned before you, I think it's important to note, we have taken measures to increase setbacks, increase landscaping along the west, the north, and the east, and the south, so there will be an attractive product. the south, so there will be an attractive product. The building on the east, from the face of building to the east property line, is 33 feet separation. And within that 33 feet, there is an eight-foot landscape buffer. There is, there are two TEs. We do agree to TE1, and we do not agree to TE2 for the reason that if we agreed to know doors facing the exterior of the site, it would essentially take a third of the entire project away, and it no longer works. However, in speaking with Commissioner Clare, he has asked for two additional TEs to address those issues, which we do agree to. So what we would propose to do is agree to TE1, delete TE2, add TE3 to say canopy trees 20-foot on center along the northeast and west, with trees to be at least 12 feet in height at the time of planting. And then finally, TE4 fencing and gating along Northwest 63rd Street shall be ornamental metal. It is, again, worth noting, this will be a gated and secured facility. And in terms of neighbors, oftentimes, these are fairly benign neighbors. People don't often even go to the storage units, but maybe once or twice a year. They don't get that much traffic when compared to a multifamily project. I frankly think this will be way less intense than what would have been developed under the currently existing SPUD. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Clare, sir, this is your ward. You've obviously been involved in the applicant. Any other questions or things you want to share with us?
Well, I do expect that we've got some viewers at home watching on YouTube, and so I want to make some comments. One of the, one of the things I heard, much like item 12, was the notification process. I started hearing from residents on Tuesday afternoon, and they were a little concerned that they had not received previous notification on this. So I do think, you know, I know notice went out, you know, it's the Lakeview neighborhood that this resides in, and then also, my neighborhood, Rollingwood, is immediately to the south of 63rd, which is another 600 homes. So there's a lot of residents that are, that are very interested in what's going on in this parcel that's set vacant for nearly 12 years. So, you know, statute was met. Those that needed to be notified within the limit were notified. I think there, you know, could have been better communication to relay that to the rest of the neighborhood, as there is a lot of interest. So I think, moving forward, some kind of improvement to our notification, whether it be onsite signage or something like that, ought to be looked at. I did receive a number of emails yesterday and today, which I forwarded on and shared with everyone else, or rather, had asked staff to do. I won't go into a lot of detail, but the main things I heard were concerns about crime, the increase in crime and security measures, the increase in traffic. Drainage was a big concern, and so I just want to say that this will, you know, Public Works, when this goes to site development, Public Works will be looking at this, and, you know, drainage requirements will have to be met. So there was a concern that the north end of the site is the low end of the site, and those neighbors to the north would be affected. So the other one that we hear all the time is property value, and we know that argument. And then one of the other key themes was just curb appeal. So I can address a couple of those. I'll ask Mr. Box to address a couple of those. But, you know, I mentioned the drainage. The curb appeal, I asked Mr. Box to add TEs 3 and 4. I think that's, that'll go a long way. And then so, you know, can you just maybe elaborate for those at home? You know, you talked about this doesn't get a lot of traffic, you know, these types of facilities don't get a lot of traffic, but what can the neighbors expect, you know, traffic-wise or user-wise on a daily basis?
Sure. Well, I mean, traffic on these are very intermittent, right? I mean, I think that's the benefit of them from a developer standpoint, is people come, load their stuff, or unload their stuff, put it in there, and they pay on a monthly basis, and it may be years before they ever go back. In terms of traffic, this is a significant decrease in intensity from a multifamily product that would have generated, you know, multiple trips a day by each unit, and specifically in the morning AM rush and the PM rush. And so from a, just a traffic standpoint, you can expect very little traffic from these. Usually when people do access it, they're there for a period of time to sort through stuff or put it in their car, and then they leave. And so it's not like a traditional commercial development where the traffic is in and out in a rapid pace. It's usually a longer stay, and again, maybe once a month. Usually, it's probably like once a year. Can I, I do need to address that Mr. Zizou pointed out. On the north side, as it relates to the trees, I'd like to put a caveat in there that that 20-foot issue is subject to Public Works saying, "We need that space for detention." If you look at our site plan, we have that shown as detention now. And as you referenced, it is a low. So I would like to just have that TE give us that. If Public Works says, "We've got to have our detention facilities there," we won't be able to have the trees on 20-foot centers along the north.
And I would ask that you evaluate your paving and your circulation to get your 20-foot landscape buffer in there and your detention in there. I don't believe that needs to be a two-way drive up there. TE4 was that security fencing along 63rd Street would be, and the gate would be ornamental metal.
Got it.
Yeah, we'll just keep the T as it. We'll keep it as it right.
Other than that, you know, my only additional comment was, you know, as this goes forward to City Council, you'll have some time. I would encourage the applicant to reach out to both the neighborhood associations, and as this, as you develop your, your construction plans, your development plans, that you communicate with them what you guys are doing.
Sure, and we're happy to go meet with them. I was, did they email you directly?
Yes.
Okay. Because I did reach out to staff, and I don't think anyone had given anything to staff. And so I was unaware of the emails until they were just handed to me.
Well, so just real quickly, just for clarification, let me, so we received kind of a flurry of emails today, and I want people to know, if they couldn't make it down, and they are actually watching from home, to know that, I'm sure Commissioner Clare did too, I bet everybody did, but I got and read letters from the following people. Dan and Vicki Logan, Colin Winfrey, Jamie Rucker, who is the Rollingwood Neighborhood Association President, so if her neighbors wonder if she actually wrote in, she certainly did. And Jessica Schwab, and then Sharon and TJ Austin, and then finally, Michael Krebs and Cynthia Sherbonne.
And I will also add that Mr. Russell Hi, who is the president of the Lakeview Neighborhood Association, emailed me at 12:53. I did not have the opportunity to forward that on to everyone as I was on my way here.
Is there anything in that that was different from what was included in the letters we received?
No, no, just, you know, this is, this is, this is a type of development that they're not excited about having in their backyard, so.
Yeah. Okay. Well, is there anybody here present that wants to be heard on SPUD 1383? Okay. Any discussion from commissioners on this?
If it's any comfort to the people watching on YouTube or fellow commissioners, I've done work with the developer before on these kind of projects, and they build a quality project. He's got them all over town, and they're of the best quality.
Yeah, and I, you know, have long, since I've been in this neighborhood, almost 12 years, this is, you know, it was a former home that sat back off the site. That got demoed probably 10 years ago. You know, there's been a lot of interest in the site over the years. We, you know, wanted to see it developed. And we've seen a previous storage facility come, and that didn't work out. We've seen the multifamily go. I mean, it's time for something to happen here. And, you know, we, one of the, one of the comments that I got was, you know, "We need more restaurants." Well, commercial development is not appropriate in this spot.
Right.
So I think with, with the options available, this is, might be a tough pill to swallow for some, but it could be, it could be much worse, so.
I think they're getting a win here versus, you know, a multi-story apart, as I recall, it was a two-story apartment building.
Yes.
Which is probably why it didn't work, because there weren't enough units. But anyway, it's, I think this is a win over that in the standpoint that, I mean, typically, people are really nervous about this use, and then they realize that there's almost no traffic in and out of them. It's very limited, and it's more often than not, you know, during the day, and also, I just, they're good neighbors, quite candidly.
Yeah, and, I mean, the other thing to keep in mind is, is, you know, the comment, one of the comments I got was, "Well, why can't, why can't this be a little private gated development?" Well, the numbers don't work from that standpoint. The lot's not wide enough for you to get double-loaded with the street down the center. You can only do lots on one side. And with infrastructure and drainage and all that, developers can't make a single-family development work, so.
Yeah.
So it will never be, you know, developed to single families, so.
Okay. If there's no other discussion from commissioners, I think we're ready for a motion.
So with that, I'll make a motion to approve SPUD 1383, striking TE2, adding TE3 that says trees shall be installed on the west, north, and east property lines, 20 feet on center, and shall go in and be installed in a minimum 12-foot height.
Those are canopy trees, correct?
Canopy trees, correct. Thank you. And then TE4, security fencing and gates along Northwest 63rd shall be ornamental metal.
Any objection to those?
No.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to SP, to City Council on SPUD 1383, subject to the technical evaluations as read and amended per Commissioner Clare. It's been seconded by Commissioner Pennington. Please cast your votes when available. One, two, three. All votes should be cast.
Thank you.
And that item is recommended for approval. Thank you. Good luck with your project.
And one point of clarification, this does go forward to City Council, so anyone that was not able to make the meeting today will have the opportunity to comment at City Council.
That is correct. City Council person there is Bradley Carter, in case you don't know and you're listening. Item 19 has been continued to 324. Item 20 has been withdrawn, and we heard items 21 and 22 out of order out of an abundance of caution. That brings us to the end of our individual or separate items to be heard, which brings us to one additional item, which is our adoption of the 2022 Planning Commission meeting schedule as amended. I just need a motion to adopt that schedule.
Motion to adopt that schedule.
Okay. I have a motion to adopt the schedule. I'll take the second on Prime Gov when Paula catches up to us, because that's how fast we are.
We're trying to get Rusty out of here.
That's right. It's been seconded by Rusty La Forge, because he gone. Cast your votes. All votes have been cast, and that item is approved. It's adopted.
I partially waited, just because one thing, since the sign came up again. I know I asked before, you've answered why we don't do signs. It is the most effective, I think, in different communities. Is it cost, hassle? It will drive a lot more people here. It causes a lot, I think, but maybe at a later meeting, maybe if you need to touch City Council, whatever it might be, maybe at the end of an agenda, we could hear why no signs if the city's position is going to remain no signs. And sorry, I'm putting, and so instead of answering it now, partly because I have to leave, maybe just some other time, because it'll keep coming up.
Just let me clarify, what do you mean by no signs?
The fact that we don't put signs up at the property notifying the public. Some communities, they have to sign up, and it says, "There's going to be a hearing on this," and that's where.
City of Evan does that.
Nobody can complain that they didn't get noticed, because some neighbor sees it and tells everybody else.
Moore, Edmond, Midwest City.
So I guess the question is, why, why does the city of Oklahoma City not? Not to be answered today, but maybe in the future.
621 square miles, probably has something to do with it.
And I know that, but we also have, if we're 300 times bigger than the city of Bethany, then we also have 300 times more resources than Bethany. So while I know we're huge, that's what comes along with it. So just saying, "Well, we're too big enough signs," doesn't seem like the only reason we should not.
JJ's done a memo, because the question comes up, and we've got a memo that's a few years old. Part of it is, is cost to the applicant, because they're the ones that has to put up the sign and all of that, but there are other reasons, too. But, well, we can send that to you all.
That'd be great. If it's, I had no doubt that it's an issue that's been probably discussed before, but I think the real issue, which is one that we, you know, it continues to bother me, is like, today is a bad outcome. When you have a room full of people for a plat that, you know, came in and weathered like this, but nobody showed up to that hearing, I won't say the man's name that was here, but he was actually generally supportive of the item. It, it makes it, I mean, it makes it really uncomfortable for me, you know, because the zoning phase is the time to have that conversation. So, you know, in my view, you know, the action that we could take, similar to kind of our involvement with the school issue, would be to draft, you know, a letter of opinion for Planning Commission, just suggesting to City Council that they take this up with the state. I mean, we have a state, we have a lobbyist at the state. I don't know why you wouldn't want more notice. I mean, I don't, you know, so it's just something to talk about. I have a feeling it's been talked about before, and there are reasons I'm not aware of as to why it hasn't been done, but we hear it all the time. I think we should say something about it. That's my two cents.
I agree, Mr. Chairman, and I think that we need to compile a list of these things. I mean, we've, we've had discussions about this, and fire suppression, and, you know, rural development, and how fast we do it. I mean, there's several of these issues where we come, we land one way, and clearly, the City Council lands another way. I think we need to consider, is there a joint meeting? Do we just need to send letters? But something like that. But I'm happy to volunteer, unfortunately, to be the person to at least gather the list of things, so.
Done.
I can send something out to the.
You are the Planning Commission Committee 01.
Great.
Yep.
No, I want Ace on that committee.
Well, he's not here, so that, you know how that goes.
Yeah, he's on.
Consider him on. Okay, Planning Commission Committees. Do you have a report from your UDC meeting?
I did last time.
You did?
Yeah.
Does there nothing to report since then?
Nothing to report since.
Okay. Planning Commission members, Commissioner Clare?
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Privet?
I'm going to say hi to my kids.
Watching on YouTube today, Jarvis and Ally.
Commissioner Hinkle?
I'll say hi to Mike's kids, too.
Commissioner Pennington?
I will also say hi to Mike's kids.
Hello, Mike's kids. I will, I will say this. I received word today from Commissioner Coffey that she submitted her letter of resignation to the mayor's office. She said she included me on it. I talked to her on, just in advance of hearing about it, and she wanted me to mention it. Apparently, today is her last meeting, so, and because she couldn't make it, she won't be here going forward, so we're going to have an empty chair. I say all that in that if you know you're not going to be here, it's all the more reason to communicate way ahead of time, if at all possible. So we certainly don't want to lose a quorum, if at all possible. One member doesn't scare me too much. We've got a great attendance from our group, but that's something we need to be mindful of until we get a replacement for Ward 3.[1724.66]